Norfolk Public School Board Work Session on September 15th, 2021. Thank you all for being here. Dr. Gabriel will be joining us as soon as she gets off work and we have Mr. Clanton joining us via Zoom. So before we call the roll, I guess we have to call the roll first, right? I was thinking we could.
I think we should do the.
In first.
I think we should do Mr. Clanton first.
Okay, that's what I thought, alright.
I'm ready to do that if you are.
So do you have a motion to read for us?
It's not, there'll be a motion, but I need to make a couple of statements on the record. I need to ask Mr. Clanton a couple of questions first. Mr. Clanton's asked to participate in today's meeting remotely pursuant to your policy BDD and the Freedom of Information Act. And that will require me to establish a couple of things for the record in minutes, which will require me to ask him a couple of questions. And then we'll have a motion to allow him to so participate. That has to be seconded and then there'll be a roll call vote when he participates. The first thing is you do have a policy in place, policy BDD. You cannot allow a member to participate electronically without a policy already being in place. Mr. Clanton has previously requested the ability to participate today electronically, which is required by the statute. There is a quorum of the board physically gathered together in one place today, which is a requirement. An individual can't participate electronically unless at least a quorum of the body is gathered together in the same physical space. In addition, Mr. Clanton, we need you to state for the record the reason why you can't be here today.
Problem is, I am attending the Q conference as the Norfolk delegate here in Atlanta, Georgia. And so the conference is, pre-registration started today, starting early in the morning. So that's why I'm not physically present in Norfolk, but in requesting to participate virtually.
Thank you. And that establishes the basis for allowing him to so participate today. And also, as required by the statute and the policy, establishes where he is actually physically located, Atlanta, Georgia. With that, if a board member will move, a board member other than Mr. Clanton, move to allow him to participate in today's meeting from a remote location by electronic means, and someone will second it, then the clerk can do a roll call vote to allow him to so participate. If someone will make a motion. Someone needs to make a motion to allow Mr. Clanton to participate in the meeting today.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Computers are wonderful, but not so. Alright, I'd like to move that Mr. Clanton be allowed to attend our meeting virtually today.
Can I get a second? Mr. Jordan seconded, okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the vote.
And Mr. Clanton won't participate in the vote.
I'm really, I'm really not hearing very much and this is really frustrating. So.
Okay, Basin?
Hi.
Camson?
Hi.
Clanton?
Mr. Clanton will not participate.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my sheet, sorry. Bert, Gabriel's not here. Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, Ms. Tanner, will you please go, we'll start the agenda, so we please go ahead and call the roll.
Basin?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Jordan?
Smith?
Here.
And Martin?
Here. Okay. So first on our agenda, we have our legislative. Priority, let's see. Okay, we have our legislative program for 2022. You should have received an overview of the terms and fees, the contract, which is up for renewal, and a, the document that's attached with the legislation listed out is actually a layover from last year. I had planned to have Jana and Ron with us today, but there was some miscommunication, so they will be with us next week, or yes, next week's meeting. So the way I want to handle this right now will be to just ask if there are any questions about the terms and fees section or the contract. Comments, questions? Okay. And then? Yes?
So one question, so are we required to approve this contract?
Yes, we've approved it in years past.
Right, but I guess I was trying to understand the context of, you know, we had the Cooperative Strategies contract also that was renewed earlier this summer that the board was not asked to approve. I'm just wondering if you can differentiate between the two contracts and.
I don't, what I would, so you're saying that we didn't approve the Cooperative Strategies contract?
Correct. I mean, that didn't come before us for a vote.
So if I may ask.
It's because I'm really.
Well, I'm just, even though we have always approved this contract, I'm asking if we are legally required to approve this contract.
You're not legally required to approve it. The superintendent can sign in on your behalf.
Okay.
It seems reasonable for you to review it and know what it says and indicate your approval.
Right, that's all I want clarity on, thank you.
Dr. Martin?
I don't, I'm sorry, I'm taking a time out here. I don't know how we're going to continue this meeting like this. I'm really, I can't hear anything. I don't have another one with me.
And Dr. Martin, I can't really hear, see you.
There's so much echo and the masks and I just, I'm really having a difficult time here. Well, I mean, right now, I think that's another question for, is that we legally can't have an all virtual meeting. So I mean, of course, that's why we're here. And Ms. Camson wants to, had proposed we do this virtually from home, but. Between the glasses and every, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm really.
Is everyone, does everyone have their sound turned off? Their mics turned off?
I don't even think I can plug this into this. I feel like I should be in the cockpit of like a fighter jet right now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I heard Carla, I heard Mr. Clanton, sorry.
Not a problem. Dr. Martin, I actually had a point of inquiry.
Yes?
Regarding the last comment to for Dr. Birdsong. I just wanted to make sure, because if I'm not mistaken, the the legislative, is that coming out of the school board budget? The contract?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. This would have been a discussion during budget season last fiscal year.
Okay. And the, the other contract referenced by Ms. Basin, is that coming out of the school board budget? Or is that another online item?
I would have to review that, I'm not quite certain.
Alright, thank you.
Although I think it's administration.
Administration, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, I'd like to review that.
Good, thank you.
So I believe the, there aren't any changes to the contract if I'm not, call me out if I'm mistaken, but it should be the same contract as last year. So, okay. And, and if I recall correctly, last year we had, we had, the contract was designed as a year-round contract. And so we're going to continue with that as well. Okay. Alright, so we have this, the legislative program from 2021. So it's carried over, we don't have any new items at this time, which I will get those, I'm going to follow up with Jana and Ron to have those emailed to us prior to our next meeting. Are there any, anything here that you'd like, you think you'd like to delete or change in any way? Any comments about this? Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I don't, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not sure about what to delete or add. I just think that we should reconsider it from scratch. That based upon the work that we'll do this evening, dealing with the goals and guardrails, also in consideration of multiple other considerations, the pandemic return to learning plan and other priorities that we may have. I think that we should take the opportunity as a full board to go back and review and discuss what our priorities are, work with the consultants to do an assessment. I know they gave us a report, but really do an assessment of what we were successful at and what we weren't. And just try to make sure that our priorities align with our vision and with our, with our goals. And I think it's been a while since we really have done that. So I would recommend that we don't just carry over, but that we give it thought and, and have the administration to get an opportunity to also review it and to make sure that it aligns with administrative goals and priorities. And then come back and, and adopt something. I don't think we need to rush just because of, you know, take your legislator to school or whatever event that we may have. I think we really should take the time to make sure that our priorities match our goals and that also because advantage represents several school divisions, that we can be assured that when they're working on behalf of Norfolk, that they are advancing Norfolk's goals, even if it may not align with other clients they may have. Thank you.
I agree with that, you know. The reason that I pushed this up this year is not because of the bring your legislator to school thing, but I know that's been kind of a hard, we've kind of made that in the past, the, the goal to have that prepared for legislators when we bring them into town. But I, in some, I just really felt that we kept falling behind in it every year. And so I wanted to make sure, I guess in my mind, I was really trying to assess the efficacy of this process. And I, my goal is to be one of the leaders, you know, not wait until they're in session, but to really get to our legislators and have a strategic plan for, you know, a strategy for us to agree upon and clearly communicate what our priorities, our legislative priorities are out the gate. And so, and before they got too busy, you know. So I know that we all have really good relationships with our representation and and that, you know, they work really, really hard for us. But again, I just wanted to try to be as organized as possible, as early in the year as possible. So, so that's why we're talking about this in September. But I appreciate your comments. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, alright, so I will go back and get in touch, like I said, with Jana, I'll get in touch with Jana and Ron and and we'll have them present so we can discuss new priorities. We're, you know, just as Mr. Jordan had said, his recommendations, we can get that done. Alright, thank you. Alright, I'll move on to our climate survey. Hi, Dr. Paul will be leading us in this discussion.
Just a mic test, can you guys hear me on the mic?
I can.
Alright. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Clanton, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with Dr. Linnell Gibson, Chief Schools Officer, and Mr. Dennis Fuddy, Senior Coordinator of Research and Planning to share the results from the Virginia School Survey of Climate and Working Conditions for the 2020-2021 school year. A few notes about this survey. It was administered through a partnership between the Virginia Departments of Education and Criminal Justice Services. With this partnership, the survey has changed to the point where the ability to have trend data with past survey data is not feasible. In fact, the creator of the survey, the University of Virginia, has strongly recommended against historical comparisons with the survey data and past survey data. Schools with students in grades six through eight were required to administer the student survey, while all schools were required to administer the survey to teachers and staff at the same time as the student surveys. All of the surveys were completed online and could be accessed with any device connected to the internet. The online surveys conducted allow for comparisons between the division, region, and the state. The surveys had 104 questions for students, making up 12 composite measures, which were student engagement, school connectedness, relationships among students, social emotional learning, relationships between students and adults, rigorous instruction, meaningful or managing student behavior, perception of safety, bullying, student aggression on two different scales, and school resource officers. The staff survey had 101 questions with 13 composite measures, which were staff collegiality, physical environment, student engagement, relationships among students, relationships among students and adults, professional growth opportunities, managing student behavior, parental involvement, school leadership, safety concerns, and bullying. Finally, the teacher survey had 118 questions with 15 composite measures, which were teacher leadership and autonomy, physical environment, student engagement, relationships among students, relationships among students and adults, rigorous instruction, professional growth, new teacher supports for teachers in their first to third year, managing student behavior, parent involvement, school leadership, safety concerns, prevalence of bullying, student aggression, and school resource officers. The survey window was from January through March of 2021. Starting with the teacher results for the division, the four most positive measures were relationships among students and adults, school leadership, rigorous instruction, and parental involvement. Additionally, working conditions and overall climate for students. My apologies. Additionally, working conditions and overall climate for students over the past two years had higher averages than the region and the state, as did teaching leadership and autonomy and professional growth opportunities. The three least positive measures were the physical environment, teacher leadership and autonomy, and the prevalence of bullying. For the students surveyed at the middle school level, the top three measures were the relationships between students and adults, the school resource officer, and rigorous instruction. Noting that the relationship and rigorous instruction measures are on both the student and the teacher's top positive measures. Additionally, student engagement had a higher average than the region, and rigorous instruction was just above the state and regional averages. The lowest measures for students were bullying, student aggression, and school connectedness. With bullying matching that of the teacher surveys as well. Another note would be the school connectedness with the survey being given while students taking part in online learning for the year up to when the survey was administered. The staff results with the three least positive measures were bullying, which is consistent with teacher and student survey results, student engagement, and professional growth opportunities. When comparing NPS data with the region and the state, the measures on this slide were the ones that had a .2 or greater difference between either the region or the state. All other measures had less than a .2 gap. In summary, the relationships between students and staff measure was in the top for teachers, staff, and students, while the parent involvement and school leadership were in the top for the teachers and staff, and the rigorous instruction was in the top for the teachers and students, with a very close margin of .01 with both the state and the region. This slide has a summary of the areas of concern from all of the surveys. Safety concerns were below the region and state averages on all three surveys. Bullying was one of the least positive measures on all three. And the students had a low school connectedness score. Although teacher leadership and autonomy is listed on the concern slide due to being one of our lower scoring measures for the division, the NPS averages were higher than the region and the state. In planning for the coming school year, principals have worked with their instructional leadership teams to ensure the PBIS plans incorporate strategies that engage students socially, emotionally, and academically. As the school year began, all schools reviewed their PBIS plans and stressed the importance of safety as well as the expectations that bullying is not acceptable. Under the PBIS umbrella, schools will continue to reinforce positive conduct and immediately address any reports of bullying. Schools will host family events to recognize students and to connect them to the school community. Regularly scheduled parent, teacher, student conferences will be held. Additionally, counselors have created times for students to meet and talk with them during the students' lunch shift to help all students feel more connected to their schools. Social emotional learning will be embedded in the instruction. And to make students feel valued, some schools will partner a student to an adult in their buildings, while others will implement a 2-10 strategy, where an adult will commit to talking to a student for two minutes every day for 10 consecutive days. Additionally, each school counselor provides training in suicide prevention, intervention, and post-pension for staff at the beginning of each school year. A training manual and files have been made available for every school and department. And during the last week of September, a robocall and social media post will be used to reiterate the importance of suicide awareness and to announce October as anti-bullying month. Of course, clubs and organizations will meet throughout the year as well. To support teachers and staff, every faculty meeting will begin with an SEL activity. Walking clubs have been established in some schools. Team awards will be announced monthly, and principals will be intentional in promoting leadership and distributive decision-making among the staff. Teachers have been divided into teams and schools to study and to share engaging innovative strategies with colleagues. Teachers will be provided professional development on how to provide brain breaks throughout the school day. And schools have already used data to identify students who need intense support and will be providing mentoring activities for these students. Our families will continue to be informed and engaged as we continue to communicate with them through in-person meetings, Zoom sessions, Canvas, schools' webpages, Dojo, Blackboard emails, and robocalls. Schools also use social media and will continue to post on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. As conditions are appropriate, there will be community walks and talks and tours to keep families engaged. Our schools' teachers and staff have been embracing and welcoming students to learning environments that have used data to make changes to promote a safe, secure, and inviting environment for all. All efforts will be under the umbrella of the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support through the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We will monitor efforts and incorporate celebrations and acknowledgements of students, staff, and families as we focus on improving climate throughout the school division. Thank you for your time. At this time, Mr. Fuddy and Dr. Gibson and I stand ready for questions or discussion around this data.
Alright, who wants to start off? Go ahead, Ms. Basin.
So my question is, so do we have school by school reports that the school board is going to receive?
We have them, and if the school board would like to have them, we can, we can separate them out so that we can provide them to the school board.
Yeah, I personally would like to see that because just as we said, you know, in our guardrails around, you know, really seeing and hearing the student and teacher voice in how they responded to these questions and how it varied. I mean, some of, some of the scores were very low, and I would like to see if there are trends in, you know, if there are certain schools or certain groups where when they might not have responded as positively as another school. And I think that would inform our continued governance training work as well. The other question I have is, did we survey principals about their, also do a climate survey for principals regarding support from central administration?
We have, we did do that survey this year. I'm not sure if the results are fully compiled yet, but I know we did the survey in the spring.
Okay, is that something that will be shared with the board?
I think that's at the, at the will of the board for agenda planning.
At agenda planning? Well, I don't think agenda planning is where, I think it's here, where we talk about whether it's the will of the board.
Yeah, I think, I think what Dr. Paul's saying that it'll be fit in through agenda planning, not discussed. We don't discuss anything like that in agenda planning now.
Okay. Because that's something I'd like to, I'd like to see and incorporate into this discussion as well.
Excuse me, can you repeat, what is that, what was the title? What, how did you refer to that survey?
If we also surveyed our principals about, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so those are also results, I, yeah. I was just saying, I would, I would like to see that if, if the full board supports that request. Let me see, so school by school data and what was also really striking to me was the, the responses around student mental health really caught my attention. And as we continue our work, you know, I hope that we, we put greater focus and attention there because, you know, it's pretty striking, I think, inconsistent with what other surveillance reports show our, our students are expressing. So I would really encourage us to, to draw some focus there. I'll defer my remaining questions to others, so.
Okay. Who else would like to speak? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. I'd just like to get some re-clarifications. So the, can you explain, so the state has the, the survey that all the school divisions take? And then I know at one time, Norfolk Public Schools had its own climate survey. And then Dr. Paul, you were just mentioning the other survey that Ms. Basin was describing. So can you kind of go back up to the top and just re-clarify or clarify for us the state survey, climate survey, any survey that we do as a, as a district? And what the two capture that may be similar or maybe, maybe different?
So the two main surveys, the one was the climate and working conditions, and that was a combination between the VDOE and the criminal justice, which was statewide data that was taken clearly across the state. And so that's the one that was reported here. And then the other one that we did internally last year was a, was a survey through building leadership on supports that they were receiving from the central office. So those were the two climate survey type input data that we got last year.
Alright, so the, when Norfolk Public Schools used to do its own climate survey data, there was additional demographic profile data associated. So for example, with the survey that we're looking at now, I don't know if it's in the school by school reports or some way like this, nothing really indicates the demographic profile of the individuals that are responding. So is that information that, that we have?
So the VDOE does, does not release or give us the demographic on the, the, this survey that was, that was just, that was administered last year, so we do not have that data.
Alright, so I think when we, when we talked about this before, at least when the, the state was doing theirs, we were doing ours and we were figuring out something. I think it's important for our school division to be able to look at disaggregated data and demographic data. So as Ms. Basin said, it can align with our goals and priorities and guardrails and so forth. So maybe I'll say to Dr. Birdsong and to the board, I think that's something we need to make sure that we find a way. maybe I'll say to Dr. Birdsong and to the board, I think that's something we need to make sure that we find a way of integrating and while I'm supportive of the work that the state has done, I think that North Public Schools and School Division should always execute what we need. And so if the state is, is not going to be able to provide us with that level of demographic data, then I would encourage us to support whatever financial and other resources that are necessary so that we can have data that supports North Public Schools' decision-making and, and assessments. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms., Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
So, Mr. Jordan, I do recall that you requested that before. I, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before that. And I do believe that Mr. Fuddy did follow up with the state and I think that request was denied, but your point is well taken.
Okay. Anyone else? Um. Okay. Oh, Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna go back. Can, can we get a refresher on why we discontinued our, our school district survey? I mean, was it just to not duplicate efforts or? Cause I recall additional composite measures being examined with our, the, the MPS survey. And I believe parents were also included in that as well. So can you, do, do you happen to have that information right now about why that survey was discontinued?
My understanding is it was because it was duplicative.
Okay. Is that right?
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Paul. So next we have the special education audit. Excuse me.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. All right. So once again, good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin. I understand Vice Chair Jordan is virtually, uh, school board members and Dr. Birdsong. It's my pleasure this evening to provide you with an overview of the Council of the Great City Schools Special Education Data Review, which is completed just this spring, in 2020. A request for the special education audit was made by Dr. Birdsong and the board in the fall of 2019. The initial audit request included the data review, which I am summarizing this, this afternoon, and an onsite review of teaching and learning, which was to involve interactions with more than a hundred NPS staff through interviews and. Okay, thank you. The review was delayed due to COVID-19 and challenges with, with completing the review remotely, as well as the division's need to shift priority and focus to establishing and conducting high-quality virtual learning and then eventually. I am not able to see the screen from here. All right, thank you. But as a result, in the fall of 2020, the onsite review was eliminated and both parties, NPS and the Council for the Great City Schools, agreed to move forward with the data review portion of the audit due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The scope of this data review consisted of the Council of the Great City Schools' analysis and synthesis of multiple reporting and data sources. Those include, you see here noted on the flow, on the slide, which are the 2018-19 total enrollment data, which included both active and inactive students and also our end-of-year student record collection from that school year. The Virginia Department of Education's school quality profile. The Norfolk City Public Schools' fiscal year 18 special education performance report published by the VDOE, which is also linked on the slide. And all data reviewed reflects outcomes and services for students during the 2017 and/or the 2018-19 school years, dependent on the data source and the report review. The multiple data and reporting sources spoke to the various student outcome and compliance measures that you see noted on, on this particular slide. Those include disability demographics, attendance, the Virginia SOL outcomes, educational environments, our continuum of services, staffing, graduation dropout and secondary transition outcomes, discipline outcomes, and then the overall 14 federal indicator accountability outcomes. The Council of the Great City Schools noted multiple areas of strength during their data review, which are summarized on the next several slides. Strengths related to identification and demographics of our students with disabilities in Norfolk included that the overall percentage of students with disabilities from 2018-19 of thirteen and a half percent was the same as the state or smaller and smaller than the national rate of fourteen percent. They also noted that eighty-four percent of our preschool-aged children and eighty-two percent of our school-aged students referred for evaluation were found to have a disability, indicating that NPS does a good job with the screening processes that are in place and that we avoid a large percentage of ineligible children or assessing children that are not suspected of having a disability. Generally, NPS's rates of disabilities by category are similar to the state and the nation. Norfolk Public Schools does not discriminate, dis- demonstrate, excuse me, disproportionality and identification of students with disabilities by race or ethnicity. And based on the new leadership in Norfolk Public Schools, starting with Dr. Birdsong, the school division's reorganization was aligned so that the Section 504 administration was transferred from the Department of Student Support Services to the Department of Learning Support and Special Education Services. The council also noted areas of strength as it relates to achievement, secondary transition, suspensions and attendance. These include that preschool children ages three to five met two of the three federal indicator performance targets, which measure positive social emotional skills, position and use of knowledge and skills and the use of appropriate behavior to meet their needs. Students with disabilities participated in statewide assessments at nearly a hundred percent rates. Student participation and alternative assessments in fourth and fifth grades in particular are aligned with the state's maximum expected rate of one percent. Norfolk Public Schools continues to increase on-time graduation rate for students with disabilities with a rate of eighty percent during the 2018-19 school year. We also met the hundred percent mandated compliance target for appropriate secondary transition goals and services during the 18-19 school year for which the data was reviewed. And we demonstrate no discrepancy in the suspension of our students that are twice identified as English-language learners and students with disabilities. There were also areas of strength noted as it relates to our educational environments. Nearly seventy-nine percent of our students with disabilities participated in the general education setting for the majority of their school day. This rate is higher than the federal target and the state or national rate, which are noted here on the slide. Students with disabilities in the disability categories of specific learning disabilities, speech, language impairment, other health impairment, autism, emotional disturbance and intellectual disabilities are all educated inclusively with the general education peers in Norfolk Public Schools at rates higher than the state or national rates. And then rates of those same groups of students who participate in the general education setting, less than forty percent of their school day are lower in Norfolk Public Schools than the state and national rates, with the exception of our students with autism. Norfolk Public Schools does not disproportionately serve students with disabilities by any race or ethnicity in any particular setting. More importantly, we are not serving any racial or ethnic group in more restrictive settings than others. And the number of more restrictive settings or self-contained service models and secondary transition service models available in Norfolk are reasonable compared to the other districts that were audited by the council.
Right?
There were noted areas of strength as it relates to staffing. These include as it relates to paraprofessionals, school psychologists and school social workers. It was noted that Norfolk Public Schools is neither at the high or low end of staffing in these positions. Staffing areas for which the council noted that Norfolk Public Schools staffs more generously than the approximately eighty divisions they have reviewed across the country include special education teachers, school nurses and also physical therapists. The final category or area of strength includes special education accountability outcomes, which are measured by the 14 federal special education performance indicators for all school divisions in the state and throughout the country. Some positives noted in, in their review of the special education performance report are also noted on this slide. These include again that we do not disproportionately suspend students with disability as an overall subgroup of students. We do not disproportionately identify students or any race or ethnicity for special education services. And we don't demonstrate disproportionality by any specific disability category. Norfolk Public Schools additionally provides timely transition of students from our preschool-aged or early childhood special education programs into our school-age programs, which include kindergarten through postgraduate programs. And also we consistently demonstrate administrative compliance through timely submission of state data reporting and our general supervision of the dispute resolution process, as well as administration of any corrective actions for any non-compliance noted in the dispute resolution process. Similarly, however, the Council of the Great City Schools' data review and analysis has provided us with areas that represent opportunities for growth and that will help to inform our future improvement efforts, as well as those that are already in progress. The opportunities for improvement summarized on the next few slides began, again, with the 18-19 SOL reading assessment proficiency rate of thirty-eight point eight nine percent for students with disabilities, which was seven, approximately seven percent below the state target. Also, math assessment proficiency rate as measured by the SOL assessment was around forty-five percent for students with disabilities, which was about two point eight two percent below the state target, which are federal indicator targets, not the federal, not the state accreditation rates. The rate of students with disabilities graduating with a standard or advanced diploma is also another area of noted growth or opportunity for improvement. That particular rate was seven, thirty-seven point six two percent based on the VDOE performance report and that measured graduation as of the seventeen-18 data. This is different from the on-time graduation rate that was mentioned as an area of strength, as this particular graduation rate measures the rate at which we, we graduate students with disabilities with a standard diploma or better, as opposed to an on-time graduation measure. Also, seventeen point nine percent of students with disabilities were identified as dropouts based on NPS data on the end-of-year student record collection, compared to approximately ten point six percent of all students in the eighteen-19 school year. And then we had low rates of students with disabilities engaged in higher education training or competitive employment one year after graduation, which is measured by the federal indicator, indicator fourteen. Additional opportunities for improvement include the number of out-of-school suspensions for students with disabilities increases at the secondary grades, with the largest increases occurring in grades six and nine. While we don't demonstrate disproportionality of out-of-school suspensions for students with disabilities as an overall subgroup, there is an identified rate of disproportionality for African-American students with disabilities in particular. We have a higher proportion of use of punitive out-of-school suspensions compared to in-school suspensions. Students with disabilities were one point six nine times more likely than their peers in the general education setting to be absent for twenty-one to thirty school days in a year and about one and a half times more likely to be absent more than thirty-one days in a school year. Finally, in terms of attendance, absenteeism of, of one to five days for students in our pre-K through fifth grade, uh, special education programs was increasing compared to a decreasing number of absences or a decreasing number of students in the general ed setting with that same number of, of days of absenteeism in kindergarten through fifth grade. Continuing, preschool students with disabilities primarily supported in the self-contained educational environment. So our service delivery model at the preschool level is, is an early childhood self-contained model. And so that was noted as an area of growth. A percent of students with disabilities spending less than forty percent of their day in a general education setting was ten point seven eight percent. And those served in separate schools was three point seven five percent, which exceeded the maximum federal target rates. The state target rates are less than eight percent and two and a half percent respectively for those two measures. We recommended consideration of an increase in the autism inclusion model that is currently available in six of our schools. Also recommendations that we review distribution of our self-contained service models across the district. Evaluated increased staffing ratios for occupational therapists and speech-language pathologists. Ninety-three percent of the divisions reviewed by the council had lower student-staff ratios for OT and seventy-four percent had lower staff ratios for SLP, student-to-staff ratios for speech-language pathologists. And then finally, administration of school psychologists and social workers apart from the special education department. And so they noted that is an area of consideration. So in terms of reviewing those areas of strength and also opportunities for growth, the Department of Learning Support Special Education Services shifted focus from primary compliance to heavily instructional, beginning with the 2020-21 school year, while also supporting the division-wide focus on navigating the pandemic and meeting the needs of our students with disabilities in a virtual or hybrid instructional model throughout the year. Despite those challenges and priorities, with the goal of continuous improvement in mind, some efforts that we already began include collaboration with the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, which will continue. Collaboration with the Virginia Department's Office of Special Education Instruction Services. Department focus on providing professional development focused on specially-designed instruction, both school administrators and instructional staff. And then outreach for myself personally, as well as other senior, others, learning support administrators to schools and administrators and teachers in specific school buildings to take advantage of VDOE professional development opportunities and academies. Additional improvement efforts already in progress included the redesign of our comprehensive coordinated early intervening services program, or commonly referred to as SEES, for the 2021-22 school year. And that redesign included a shift in focus on African-American students with disabilities suspended at higher rates and a shift to utilizing staff with training and school counseling as our SEES student intervention counselors, as opposed to paraprofessionals, which was the model that we were using previously. The Department of Learning Support additionally hired a teacher specialist to focus on the emotional disturbance district-wide program classrooms at the elementary level and for that staff member to support the expansion of the continuum of services for students served in these classrooms at the secondary level. We've also been engaging in a review of research-based programs effective in meeting the needs of students with disabilities, particularly in literacy and math and social skills or social emotional learning, so that we can make recommendations and assist with adoption and establishment of specially-designed rankings, especially for our, our special education classes and classrooms. And then also a development of the Department of Learning Support Special Education Services five-year improvement plan focused on student outcomes and also compliance. That is also an improvement effort currently in progress. Additional future improvement efforts include collaboration with the Department of School Leadership to support and improve graduation outcomes of students with disabilities through education of both school administrators and individualized education program team members in making determinations specifically around the applied studies diploma. And then also professional development and an ongoing support to school teams in effective co-planning, co-teaching and the high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. Additionally, we plan to establish structures and practices for auditing of IEPs and services for students with disabilities with a focus on outcomes, including goals, progress monitoring, post-secondary transition and assessment and graduation decisions across the division on a consistent annual cycle in line with what the state plans to do with local LEAs across the state. And then finally, collaboration with Departments of Student Support Services, School Leadership, Student Wellness and others to provide school-level assistance with the monitoring and review of discipline and attendance status for students with disabilities, interventions and alternatives to suspension. And part of this work has already begun this school year and that will occur through learning support team members, including myself, participating in regular school data meetings, which are organized by the Offices of School Leadership Development and School Improvement throughout the year. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to share an overview of the special education data review and audit with you this afternoon. At this time, I'll be happy to answer the questions that you ask.
Thank you, Dr. Walter. I appreciate that presentation. I know we all also have a copy of the report. I'd like to start by asking you a question. What, what should be one to three, you know, just what are the biggest takeaways that you think that we should be getting from this report?
Well, I think number one is staff expertise, you know, and that's going to certainly be aligned to the DRAF five in terms of recruiting and retaining, you know, quality staff. In terms of improving student outcomes overall, ensuring that we have staff that are properly trained. You know, pre-service, we can't control that, but we certainly have a, a lot of discretion over how we support and coach them and train them. And so that's a big part of what's currently in the works as far as learning support, developing a five-year plan and also a PD plan that's embedded into that across years one through five, beginning with this, beginning with this school year. The second big takeaway that I would note from. The second big takeaway that I would note from the audit is also graduation outcomes in particular. As I said, as the report noted, and if you review any of the data, Norfolk Public Schools is doing a very good job with graduating our students with disabilities on time, same as their general education peers. However, where we have a significant opportunity for growth is also ensuring that we are graduating those students to the extent possible with a standard or advanced diploma, because that's going to have the most positive impact on the post-secondary outcomes that they have once they actually leave us. So tying that into some of the other factors that the report noted, such as, you know, rates of post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities, those that are participating in higher education once they leave us, those that are participating in higher education and competitive employment and/or some sort of career training. Those will be impacted by our focus on that as well. And the third one, you know, being a compliance one would just be developing structures or improving structures within the division coming from our department in terms of how we provide more monitoring and feedback and accountability for the compliance pieces. All those tie into the student outcome pieces as well. But, you know, this particular report also aligns to the JLOC report of the Joint Legislative Review and Audit Committee that was conducted throughout the state of Virginia. And so these are, the, the areas for improvement noted here are not unique to Norfolk Public Schools. There are areas of concern throughout the state. One of the things that came out of that particular review was that the state overall needed to have better structures in place for monitoring all hundred and twenty-plus local LEAs throughout the division. The efforts at the state level are going to trickle down to the local LEA. So whatever Virginia has to do is obviously going to impact us at a local level. And so the intention of our Department of Norfolk Public Schools is to make sure that we get ahead of that input review, I won't say put structures in place, because we do have structures in place, but review our existing structures and improve on those where we need to, so that prior to our audit year, we've made improvement wherever we need to. You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I had about five areas, but I narrowed it down to my top two priorities so that other people have some time. My first concern is about IPs in general. It's if you write an IP and the child is not getting any growth or is getting minimum growth, wouldn't we say that that's one of two reasons? First of all, the IP is too standard. It doesn't really tightly address the needs of the student, and therefore, the growth isn't coming because the IP and not this from a list of things that look good to put in. Or it's a fabulous IP, but it's not properly implemented because we need to provide more training for our children. You know, how would you respond to that?
Well, I mean, I think those are certainly two of the potential reasons for a child not being able to, not demonstrating growth, or for the school not to be able to speak to growth. Certainly, the data collection and progress monitoring piece in general is, could be a third factor. You know, how well-versed is the school team and the case manager in being able to collect data that speaks to the goals once developed? So there are a number of reasons that could speak to that, but certainly the attention would be on that list. And that does, again, tie back into, you know, professional development and what we've discussed as a part of a five-year plan. And so when I mention the high leverage practices, for example, you know, those, those practices have been research-based and proven to be effective for students with disabilities, and they're practices that all special education teachers are going to need to be proficient, proficient in. There are twenty-two distinct practices, and the intention of our department and some of the work that we've already started is providing additional professional development to school teams around those concepts so that we can ensure, no matter where the teacher came from, regardless of whether they are fully licensed, provisionally licensed, first year, third year, that, that we have a common language and expectation for instruction and for IP development, for data collection and progress monitoring throughout, throughout the division.
So when you're talking about that, we're talking about response intervention. Basically, that's the collection of the data.
I mean, certainly, when you're providing an intervention, data collection is always going to fall under the umbrella of response to intervention. Again, of course, keeping in mind that we understand that when we're talking about IP services, that's not, that's not a tier-one intervention that we're, we're speaking of.
Right. Well, I agree, and that's why I'm saying, are we deeply implementing RTI so that we know exactly what we're going for, so that we're more tightly? When we, when we're ready to write our IPs, we're more tightly focused on that child and exactly we can say, why are we putting this one in here? Well, here's the data that goes with it.
Sure.
It just seems like that too often we're not getting the growth, and there has to be a reason for it, and it's not the child. It's never the child. So it means that we're, to me, when I look at it, I think a great IP and poor implementation because it's too generic very often. Or great IP, but not implemented the way it's supposed to be.
Sure. And so then that second part of what you spoke to aside from, like I said, our efforts to build professional development opportunities in a department-specific program for that, as opposed to, you know, one shot, hit or miss, everybody's kind of doing their own thing. So we will align something very heavily to all of those areas. And again, that high leverage practice format covers all of the things that you were talking about. The second piece of that, though, in terms of a, a school team developing a, a quality individualized education program, but the student's still not making progress because it's not well implemented. That's a second part that I spoke about in terms of the compliance auditing piece, you know. And so once we give the people, give staff of the skills to make sure that they're able to do that well, the second part of that is ensuring that we have structures in place that actually allow for monitoring and coaching and feedback of that, as opposed to kind of putting it out there and hoping that it gets done. And so we will be involving school administrators into that as well, because obviously they're the first part of just instructional monitoring and support in our buildings and for our staff.
Right. And so we'll be, so we're sure that our, our, our special education teachers understand that they're accountable for those IPs. That there is an expectation in the, in the special education department that you expect to see growth. And there's a growth line there for them to do, just like everyone else, because they can learn. We just have to really define exactly what it is they need and make sure we're properly implementing that. And if we're not getting the results we want, we go back and we need to have someone that has their eye on that at all times.
Yes, ma'am. And, and also keeping in mind that, yes, case managers, special education teachers, service providers are certainly the first line of accountability in that process. They're sort of the holders of, you know, setting up that collaborative relationship, being able to collect that information, being facilitators of communicating that information to whoever is involved. However, each student's individualized education program is going to outline who needs to be involved in the service delivery. That could include general education teachers, and yes, those structures do need to and will include ways that we can make sure we monitor that with, with the support of building administrators at each building.
And so that kind of brings me into segues into my second concern is, is inclusion. And early in the century, we started a big program on inclusion because pretty much everything was self-contained. And as we, and so the, and so we had a model school, Bayview, where it was staffed based on a plan that had been put together and, and was a big movement at the time. And it involved having, if you had an inclusion class, that class had a full-time special education teacher. So there was, it, so it was co-teaching going on in the inclusion classes. And that school was highly accessible and moving the bar. But somehow, as the inclusion classes went in, and we, so many people really wanted to see more kids in inclusion, because there were so many that were really ready with the right supports, we never got that kind of staffing. So who are you on that with, with the, how to increase the number of our children in inclusion and who are successfully in place in that classroom?
Sure. So I think, first of all, in terms of inclusion, inclusion is actually an area of strength, you know, in Norfolk Public Schools, in terms of the rates at which we educate our students with disabilities, but they're same-age peers. You know what I mean? And so when, when you refer to inclusion as classrooms, those are general education classrooms with students receiving more appropriate special education support. And so I certainly think that in line with IDA, the expectation is for every student that we educate them in the most least restrictive environment possible that affords them a free and appropriate public education. So certainly, I don't have any disagreements with, with that philosophy. That's what the regulation is, is based on. In terms of staffing, again, also speaking specifically to this audit, and that was something that I was already aware of coming into this role, and the audits validates that. As far as special education teachers are concerned, Norfolk does do a very good job of staffing our rate of special education teachers relative to other divisions that primarily focus on what the regulation allows, which is a points model. So staffing our special education teachers by level one or level two in terms of the level of service the IP lays out that they need. Norfolk Public Schools doesn't adhere strictly to that model. We also try to provide allocations for schools in terms of their special education staffing that also supports what's reasonable in terms of logistics. And so while that federal points model or that state points model might allow that, you know, we can have one special education teacher for however many students based on the amount of services that their IP requires, we take a look at that, but then we also align our allocations to. That may well be the case, but those students also across five grade levels. And so logistically, it's not reasonable for a single special education teacher, especially in an inclusion model, to cover all of those areas. So we are focusing on that in the division. In order to staff even further beyond that, that is certainly not anything that I would be opposed to. But it would have to be a division discussion. I would certainly rely on assistance from our, from our friends in Miami.
Wanted to get some idea for you were on that, because that's a really big deal for me, because I've seen this in practice. And, and, and you get, the typical thing is you might get two. Well, that's still three grade levels.
Sure.
And we, at three, where we had two grade levels per teacher, at that many, three, this is at the elementary level. It was more, it was workable, wasn't ideal, but it was workable. But once you fall below that and you're giving them three classes and, you know, six classes. And, and so my feeling is, you know, we're, we're, and maybe in line with what everyone else is doing, but what everyone else is doing is not working for our special education children. And so that's where, that's something I know doesn't change overnight, and I know it's a big staffing problem, and it'll be something that some of us will be pushing for with next year. But it's, I just want to, if we start pushing for it, is that something that you, you believe in? I don't want to go.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So the short answer is I will take any support that you would like to provide in that area. Yes, ma'am. And you're speaking to someone that started out her career as a K-five elementary teacher. I was the only LDP in the building.
A tragedy to me, because none of the children get what they need, and that's one of the reasons we're not seeing. We're just seeing this teeny-tiny progress of our students with, with disabilities, because we, as the adults, are not giving them the amount of support that they need. And especially when you're looking at where they're in a classroom at the elementary level. But even as they continue up and we're pushing them into classrooms. And sometimes they come out of a self-contained room without having the transition, which would be little by little, letting them go into the inclusion class until they're all inclusion. And sometimes it's like self-contained, and then boom, the next day, they're in an inclusion class without any training or, or transition in between. Even if you only do it for a month or so, they need to be doing that transition. They don't need to just be hop from one situation to another. So those are concerns that I've had for a long time, and I, this is, this was a great audit. I mean, they did a great job with it, and you've done a great job of presenting it to us. You're always, anytime I've heard you this year, you, or recently, you always have so many, so much information to be able to address any questions that I have. So I really appreciate that. But those are two things that I will, that's where my eye will be, is on the IPs and whether or not they've actually, and that's, you know, a report we'll probably be asking for, how much growth happened to the child? Or how much alignment was there between their results and what the IP said we were supposed to deliver with them? And that's, that's what accountability is all about. So those are the two things, and as we maybe move toward making an inclusion model really inclusion with the kind of support they need.
And so I appreciate that. As I said, I'll take any support the board wants to provide in that respect. I'm not in disagreement with those as priority areas, but I also don't want anyone to lose sight of the fact that in terms of staffing currently for inclusion, as well as our rate of educating our students with disabilities in an inclusion model are already areas of strength. Does that mean that there's not room for improvement? Certainly, certainly not, but I don't want to lose sight of things that are, that are already going well as it relates to our district-wide or more self-contained programs. You know, even just from my observation in the last year, even within the virtual and hybrid setting, I would argue, you know, that those are some of the strongest special education programs that we have in, in the division. Certainly, there are plenty of, of other strengths. And so, you know, as it relates to transitioning students out of those programs or out of that level of restrictive environment, that is certainly important for the students that require that type of transition and whose disability-based needs allow for them to transition into a less restricted setting. But also, I want to remind folks that not every child's disability-based needs and level of ability means that an inclusive setting is the most appropriate way for them to receive it.
But, but we certainly still, if we transition them properly, even if you spend a year looking at a child and saying, you know, they're doing a good job in reading, but everything else is still a problem, all the organizational skills, all those things. But they, but during that one subject, if they're strongest, that's, we always start.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are they, where are they the strongest? And then we start trying the inclusion just there, and then they go back to get all their extra support. And that's what I'm talking about when I'm talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'd just like to say, thank you so much. It's good to see you have your eye on it, and, and I really appreciate that because we need to do what we can for our students with disabilities. I don't think as adults, and I'm not talking about Norfolk. I think across the country, we don't give them the type of support they need, whether it's staffing or whatever. And, and I'd like to see our, our district has the possibility, looks like it's you as the leader.
Well, it takes a team. So thank you.
That this could, we could be forming the wedge that starts up to give our, our children with, with disabilities the support they need.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Well, like Ms. Camps, and I do, I share, I share her enthusiasm and support for strengthening our inclusion programs and any supports that are necessary. So to that end, you know, I know, I know the audit said that that was an area of strength. And can you speak a little, in a little more detail as to what factors they looked at to arrive at that specific conclusion? And I asked that question because, you know, as you noted, you know, relative, I know this is our special education inclusion staffing. You know, we see what a lot of districts are seeing with the high turnover rate. But how oftentimes when, when, you know, that conversation might come up with a teacher who is doing special education inclusion, sometimes the conversation is about the supports that they have. And so could you, could you, and about how inclusion is actually, you know, done with co-teaching? And, you know, what, what other, I guess, through this audit, how, how did they arrive at? At that conclusion?
So it's a fair, it's a very good question. So thank you. To be fair, this particular audit is only touching the surface of, do we have strengths in terms of our structures and our staffing that support inclusion? It is not a deep dive into, you know, yes, we, we, we have actually pretty good staffing in comparison to other divisions and certainly in comparison to what the regulation might require to support inclusive practices. And we also have a mindset, I think, in Norfolk Public Schools that we understand least restrictive environment. And so teams are making decisions for students with disabilities to be served in an inclusive or general education setting to the extent possible. That's not the same as then speaking to, once we place students in those service models, what is the quality of the instruction or the inclusive services that are taking place in there? And I certainly won't speak to, you know, any generalizations as to whether we are or not doing a good job, but certainly there are areas of improvement. And, and it is an area that school administrators have expressed to me as, you know, when, when requesting from them, what are areas of support that you need from our department? When we talk about a five-year plan and professional development, what do you see? Because again, they are that, that first line of instructional leadership and accountability and monitoring and, and building. What do you see that your staff need? Because our job is to support that and also make it easier for them. And so as it relates to co-planning, co-teaching, collaboration, those are all areas that we've spoken about heavily, even beginning during the twenty twenty-one school year, as I mentioned, and collaborating with Mr. Brady's Department of Curriculum and Instruction. It's a very significant part of this, this high leverage practice work. A lot of the high leverage practices are tied to collaborative practices. And then once we have this, an understanding, structures, resources in place to support collaborative practices, people are collaborating, do they also have the instructional practices in recent years and to implement quality instruction once they've had that opportunity? And so, you know, to, the short version of your question is, you know, the audit doesn't speak to that level of detail. And so, um, you know, to, the short version of your question is, you know, the audit doesn't speak to that level of detail. Uh, and that's probably primarily because, as, as I said again, when the audit originally started out, the intention was to do that data review component in conjunction with an onsite review, you know, of, of classrooms, observations, focus groups, interviews. And then the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, derailed that. You know, at the discretion of the board, we will move forward with anything in the future that you all feel like is, is necessary. I can speak just from my own personal, um, professional opinion, talking with, like I said, school administrators, various staff. You know, an audit wouldn't necessarily tell me a whole lot that I don't already know as far as it's an area of growth. And so it, it will, when, when I mention, I've mentioned multiple times sort of a five-year plan and a PD plan, it will be heavily aligned to those particular practices.
All right. Thank you for that. And, and I understand that this is just scratching the surface. And so that leads into my next question, which is around, um, the follow-up study questions that the Council of Great City Schools, um, had included in the report. Many of which I thought, you know, I've either, you know, I've asked some of those questions in the past and also would like to see, um, us delve into. And I wonder if, um, you or the administration can talk about, you know, what are our next steps? Um, as we do take a deeper dive, are we going to take a deeper dive? And what does that look like and how the board can support, um, that effort? Um, and so, you know, I don't know if you or Dr. Bertson can answer that question. But, um, you know, I, I'd like to hear what's, what's next.
Sure.
So that we can.
Well, if, you know, if I'm, if I'm understanding the question, certainly, yes, I know that the, the study questions and that are embedded throughout the report to kind of support. Now that we have this information, what are questions that they considered might be useful to us in diving deeper into some of these areas, uh, and also diving deeper into how we are planning and making decisions around uh, action steps, you know, before addressing those. So certainly that's something that the learning support team, myself and my team, will be utilizing. Again, as we work through PD plans, five-year planning, it's certainly what we'll be using to kind of structure collaborative work with other departments as appropriate that I've, that I've mentioned. I think what's a very nice, um, opportunity for us this year again is, is the structure that school leadership has outlined for this year in terms of data meetings at each school and, and, um, ensuring not so much at their time, because I know that schools were doing data meetings before, but that all central office departments are heavily involved in that. And so we'll be able to use some of these to guide, um, that discussion in schools as well. Just to kind of support administrators and considering, again, being the immediate instructional leader and, and, uh, having the greatest impact on instructional decisions in each building, using that to, to guide that. And I think beyond that, some other structures that we have, we began last year that we can also continue to explore this year. Just, um, similar to what the audit intended to do originally in terms of focus group, communities of practice, making sure that plans, um, and professional development we offer, uh, we vet through groups, that we get feedback from staff so that we are, we are constantly, uh, for lack of a better expression, program monitoring the support that our department is offering so that we can be sure on a regular basis that it is meeting the needs of our teachers, staff and administrators.
Okay. And, um, last question for now is, so is there, as part of this audit or as some other audit, I don't know if the Children's Services Act, you know, if there is a separate audit that is done by them, but how do, how are we monitoring and tracking, uh, the students that, um, you know, through the IEP process, we find that, you know, we cannot service in, in our schools? Like, how, how are we monitoring that? Because I know every, every year it seems that we allot a certain, you know, I think it's $300,000, you know, to the Norfolk Interagency Consortium. And, you know, does that meet the need that we have? How, I, I know we do go above and beyond what that allotment is. But how are we monitoring and tracking the students that, you know, do go to private day placement? And are there services that we could be providing in-house? Um, that right now, you know, are, are being offered and supported elsewhere?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. So a, a, a couple of things related to that. Yes, we do follow, you know, the Children's Services Act. We have, you know, a fat team process that, that our division uses and that, that we engage in similar to, because it is a requirement. And we, we certainly have students that are enrolled in private day placements, uh, you know, CSEP, those different kinds of, uh, of areas and our department does. Uh, for the most, for the most part, case manage those students in particular, um, and, and monitor those. Again, that's not to say that there's not room for improvement in terms of their outcomes. Because using, um, the dropout rate is, is, is an example, you know what I mean? They are not the sole contributors to the, the current rate that exists for students with disabilities. Uh, but they would be an area of concern for me as it relates to that particular indicator. We are, you know, aware of, of need as it relates to that. I think the other piece of that, like I mentioned, for instance, um, it took, one thing that I have observed and that I felt like this audit also spoke to is that while we have some strengths with our, the continuum of services in, in Norfolk Public Schools, that's not to say that every type of continuum of service and level of service is as robust as it needs to be. And so when I mentioned the, the additional teacher specialists to help support, uh, ED programs, that would be a prime example of, we're already aware and working towards ensuring that we, we, we monitor and support the quality of those existing programs, but that we also work to expand that continuum of services into the secondary level. Because it's not as robust at the secondary level as it is, uh, at, at the elementary level. So when we talk about things like private day placements, you know, the biggest thing is ensuring that we have uh, as much support and the right level of support within our Norfolk Public Schools, buildings and programs for students that have that level of need, um, before we're having to place them outside. Because again, what we're finding is nothing against those programs or quality programs. I just, you know, walked the other day with, uh, Dr. Lazarus over at the CSEP Center, you know, very knowledgeable, hard where they know what they're doing for the students that they receive. But I, I think it's like with anything else, once students are a little bit more removed, uh, you know, from, from our buildings, then, then we're going to have a harder time of ensuring that they continue to be best. Our, our first approach to that would be improving existing programs and expanding them in the areas that we know that they're needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
I'd just like to, to give, well, first of all, appreciate the presentation, the data review. Uh, my colleagues asked, uh, much of the questions I had, but I wanted to go back to a couple of things. Um, you know, initially the board asked for not only the data review, but also the onsite teaching and learning review. And according to the presentation, we delayed that review because of the, the pandemic. I, I would like to recommend that the board have the administration work with the Council of Great City Schools to figure out how we can proceed with the, uh, onsite review of teaching and learning. Uh, and I think especially in the midst of the pandemic, as, as I think I heard Dr. Walter say, that in some instances, um, the virtual delivery system may have worked better for some students. So I think to have an opportunity to have a in-depth review of what's working and what's not, what may be something for us to consider, uh, in terms of our delivery system post-pandemic or ongoing pandemic would be of great value. I also think as part of that, what Ms. Bassin touched on, the, the follow-up study questions. I think we should have, um, some follow-up, uh, to the board at appropriate board level of those, those studied questions. I think that from our role in terms of monitoring progress and implementation with fidelity, I think it's important that we be able to, uh, get a sense of not just what the data is telling us, but where we see these follow-up, uh, study questions and in some instances, follow-up study actions that we can marry what the analysis has brought forward, what the council has identified and what, uh, the, the team and administration is, is implementing. I think that's very important. And I think it also goes back to a point that Ms. Bassin brought earlier about making sure that we have teacher and student and, uh, family voice in, in our work. And then, um, I guess my final question is, uh, the Council of Great City Schools, uh, typically when they give, do audits, they will come and present uh, their findings, I guess, because we have a data audit, we're doing that. Will there be an opportunity for us to hear from the council staff themselves in terms of their data review, their, uh, follow-up questions that they've, uh, they've created? And what their thoughts were based upon, uh, what they've written in the report, but also getting the chance to, to hear from them directly?
So, Mr. Jordan?
Okay.
I was just going to say, we, we have no problems with that. In fact, we've had conversations about, um, having the onsite work, um, being conducted. We too believe that it's imperative that we have that level of expertise to come out and be an extra set of eyes to go into our classrooms, to conduct observations, to give us some meaningful feedback. And for us to just look at our da, our data and everything comprehensively. So we've had these discussions and we're certainly not opposed to having them come back to debrief with the board, if that's the desire of the board.
Yeah, I, I personally think we should do that. I know when, when they did the, did some other studies for us and we never got that. And I can tell you, even to this day, I still kind of struggle because, you know, I've read their report and then when we have conversations from uh, facilities or finance or operations, it's hard to tell whether or not what they have found, uh, how we have taken action on it. Oh, you just made me, reminded me of, of something else. I also think that the board should consider asking the Council of Great City Schools to do a similar audit of human resources. And so I want to, uh, put that on the table, doesn't have to be today. But I think as we continue down this path of, uh, trying to, uh, assess our strengths and our opportunities, I think human resources is an area that often comes before us with many questions that we have and that we hear from our stakeholders. And so I would encourage us to also begin some preliminary conversations around, uh, doing, uh, asking the council do an audit of human resources and being able to also tie that to our, uh, goals and guardrails that it mentions a lot about, uh, staffing and who gets placed where and whether or not we have, uh, historical systemic issues that need to be addressed that lead to, uh, true equity and opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Walter. I appreciate your time.
Again.
I didn't look. Carlos, Mr. Clanton, do you have any comments? Sorry, I keep forgetting to look down.
Good. Dr. Martin, if I may, one, one other question.
Yeah.
Will this, will this be presented to the Special Education Advisory Committee?
Uh, yes. So, um, because it's not a policy or regulation, it wasn't something we took to them. Or it wasn't something that was taken to see prior to presentation to the board. But yes, absolutely. I'll be following up to see if I can answer any questions to just kind of share with him.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. You too. Okay, Dr. Paul, you're back up. Now we have our policy discussion. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, members of the board and Dr. Bertson. This afternoon is the completion of the review from the V S B A May updates. Included within today's updates is the final policy change recommended, recommended by the V S B A to meet statutory requirements concerning transgender students. That's policy G C L, professional learning. A few notable changes to the policies are as follows. G C B D Z, as requested when this, this policy was last reviewed and voted on, a more specific table of leave was created, as well as an explanation of how the carryover for leave works. Additionally, the administration and the P R C is recommending the addition of paternity leave to the policy. The P R C also recommends a second reading on this policy with a vote at the October business meeting. Policy G C L, this updates the policy with the new code regarding transgender students, as well as the addition of the requirement for cultural competency training. I C I D adds the allowance for unscheduled remote learning days due to weather or emergency conditions. I H A is being recommended for deletion since it is not a requirement by law. J E D adds reasons for excused absences, which include the requirement of allowing one day per school year for middle and high school students to engage in a civic event. Additionally, the regulation has been updated to include this, as well as the regulatory truancy procedures. Then we have J H C D, where it updates the policy for a law that goes into effect on January 1st of 2022 in regard to the albuterol inhalers. Additionally, there is a requirement within this policy for a regulation which has been created and is posted as an update to the board. And we stand ready for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Comments? Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Uh, so a lot to digest in that quick piece. Um, can we go back for a moment to, uh, I believe you said it was, uh, the employee leave, um, policy? If I understood you correctly, you're saying that's the one where we looked at, uh, paternity leave, other explanations and so forth. Is that correct?
So the G C B D Z, when we looked at that in the last time we voted on that, the, there was some confusion around the carryover of leave. So that, that has been updated with a more comprehensive table and a better definition to the, the policy around leave carryover and, um, the total years of experience and how that connects to how they're allowed to carry over leave, as well as adding the paternity to the policy, paternity leave.
So, um, I know when we were discussing this before, that there were concerns, uh, brought forward by, uh, uh, our education associations as well as the principal associations. Have you all had direct conversations with any of those groups in terms of the recommended changes here?
So for the specific recommendation here, uh, no, but the paternity has been a discussion in the past with the groups as far as a, a request. Um, this was just clarification of the carryover of the days.
Right. So I, I guess what, the reason why I'm asking is because I think I and maybe some others have received concerns there. And part of what I was hoping we were going to do as we continue to revise this is to reach out. And so if, if this is one of the ones that's scheduled to be voted on later, I would like for us to try to make a particular effort in giving, um, our secondary principals association, elementary principal associations and our teacher associations and others that we have the, the opportunity to, to really review. And if they have questions, be able to have some exchange and have, not at the board level, but have some exchange to make sure that there's, um, uh, harmony. And if not, then at least we know what is, what's, if there's any, any disputes or concerns. Um, the, the grouping for instruction, uh, policy that you indicated, uh, we would delete because it's not required by law. Can you just, um, talk about it a little bit, uh, outside of it being required by law? Is it a good thing or is it an unnecessary thing?
So I, I think policy level for grouping for instruction, I, I think that's, it's kind of deeper for policy to go. It's, it's something that we, we, we do on a routine basis now. When this policy was put into place, I don't know if it was as routine, but that's a, a large part of our professional development. Not only with grouping, but we talk about small group instruction from the elementary to the secondary level. Um, and, you know, since it's not required by law to be in there, the thoughts were, since, since it is a focus point in the division, that, that we didn't have to have it as a policy per se.
And, um, regarding the policy on, uh, student suspensions and expulsions. So there's been, uh, quite a bit of, uh, conversation about this policy, uh, as recent when we were dealing with, um, reinstateness and expulsions in the February, March timeframe. And know that there was, uh, there were some recommendations that, uh, Attorney Cloud asked that maybe we should consider. I think there was some, uh, considerations coming out of, um, Department of Student Support Services, I think I got that right, uh, around that, there were some, tools and techniques that we implemented around, uh, virtual instruction and our alternative program. virtual instruction and alternative programs. So were any of these conversations, discussions that were going on from February to date considered as part of this update to this policy?
Not at this time.
So I would like to see us make sure that those things don't get dropped. I know that Attorney Cloud spent a great deal of time and effort on these issues. I know that we've heard from members of the public, different coalitions dealing with the issues of suspensions. We just had a presentation dealing with the special education, some issues around that. Our goals and guardrails talked to it a little bit. And so I would just ask that even if we don't make these changes at this time, because we're trying to make sure that we're staying compliant with the the law, that we don't allow another quarter of the year to go by without coming back and trying to address these issues that have been raised and were indicated would be updated in our policy by by this time. So that's that's all I have at this moment at the mark.
You're you're are you talking specifically about J E D, the excused absences?
No, I'm talking about the the student discipline. There's student suspension and expulsion. Yeah, so you may recall, I know, I think Ms. Campson and Ms. Smith and I were part of a reinstatement panel and there were some discussions and suggestions that we had. Attorney Cloud sent all kinds of things for consideration. I think Ms. Hamwood had shared a couple of meetings about some innovation that was being considered there and there was discussion around the state D J, one of the one of the State Department's Juvenile Justice about some the difference between what was a recommendation, what was a requirement, what we had to do, what we didn't have to do. And then we also have our student handbook where a lot of these things then end up in the student handbook. And I just think initially we were trying to be on path to make updates to this policy prior to the start of the school year. And now the school year started and I just want to recommend that we not that we just take a look at it and either make a determination whether or not we're going to update this policy. So it's more in tune with with our goals and guardrails and twenty-first century approach to discipline. And that it does not pass by for another quarter or another year without recommendations from the administration and any appropriate action by the board.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
As it relates to Mr. Jordan's questions and comments around this particular policy, I'd like to hear from members of the policy review team because this policy went back to the team for feedback. And I know Mr. Cloud is a a part of that that committee. So what was discussed during that time and was there a reason that those recommendations were not included?
I think all the recommendations that I had mentioned were included. The provisions that I drafted. I'm not sure what others may have been considered and postponed.
I I'd have to go look at the records, but I do believe that in the last time we we did some revisions to the policy, Ms. Bassin, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
I was I was just gonna say that that we did go back and look through all the suggestions that Mr. Cloud made. And I know we did talk explicitly about the virtual learning piece. And so my recollection and what I read here was in alignment with what was previously shared. But if there's something that, you know, other board members recognized as not being addressed, you know, if you can provide specifics, you know, that would be helpful to us. Yeah.
If you if you're saying that the May two thousand and twenty-one update captured that and then that this update is just adding additional pieces that I'm I'm comfortable with that. I just wasn't sure and just wanted to make sure that 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 has been captured. But I can go back on my own and look at it. And if there's anything that I see, I can bring that back.
Okay. I'd appreciate that, Mr. Jordan. Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you all very much. Okay, we have about ten minutes before our governance training. So, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Just just for clarity, so the there had been some discussions around vaccination requirements. And and I think in some email about it may be on for action at the at the next business meeting is is that the case that there's that we'll be taking some action on something at the business meeting on the twenty-second? And if so, when we get a chance to discuss it prior to the
Originally, when we were making the agenda, it was put there as a placeholder in case we do need to with the intention of probably doing it. I know things have changed since then, so I'm not, I can't say with confidence that we are absolutely going to be voting on vaccinations. Dr. Birdsong, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. So to to Mr. Jordan's point, I I would just caution the board at at this time because I know there are a lot of of course, we're all aware of President Biden's plan and and some of his of his recommendations and directives around vaccination requirements for certain employees. I do know that Virginia is one of twenty-six states that have an OSHA-approved plan, so therefore we're going to have to be in compliance with that plan, which will require employers that have one hundred or more employees to require their employees to be vaccinated. While those specific details have not rolled out yet, I would suggest that we, as a governance team, take a look at what's being rolled out. All of the details have not been provided at this time and I'm not sure. But I I would assume that within the next few weeks, that information will be available so that the board can review and and discuss what those plans may look like. And I know in addition, DOLI regs have been updated effective September the eighth. And so we'll be needing to take a look at that as well. So I know that's coming down and that will be a requirement, you know, based upon our state being having that OSHA mandated plan, help plan.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that because I I knew at one time there was something on the draft that we didn't find ourselves trying to vote on something that we didn't get a chance to
Right.
discuss prior to it. I thought that was going to be part of the policy discussion. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Thank you for that question. That that was part of a a couple of other questions I had related to next week's agenda. As you know, Dr. Martin, you know, I expressed with you, you know, some concern around the limited discussion we've had as a board around our return to school. And I was hoping that we could have some discussion next week with an update on our return to school. How it's going, you know, what are some of the challenges that we've experienced and what the board can do to support the administration? For for example, transportation, you know, what what can we do to support that? What can we do to support our families who may be seeking virtual options right now and may like what how is that impacting? You know, absenteeism, are we seeing greater absenteeism as a result? So those kinds of questions are still out there. And most importantly, you know, I know that OSHA, you know, has a mandate out there, but I don't think that that means that we as a district cannot move forward with this discussion. And as you know, I feel like what's that? Right, right. I I understand that. I just, as a for a board discussion, I'm just saying that I don't think that I feel like we've already waited long enough. And at this point, you know, not only should we be considering a mandate for our staff or for all of our employees, but also for all eligible.
We're off agenda topic. We're less eight minutes there. I don't say, Ms. Bassin, that the items that you're speaking of don't have merit, but I think that you should address them to the chair so that we can appropriately get them on the agenda. It is on the agenda for the twenty-second for this. But we do need to get them to the agenda.
Okay, and respectfully, I have put this multiple times to the chair, as you know. So
So I I we we definitely have talked about this. So I know that we're talking a lot about mandates. Also, wasn't sure with the timing of what was going to come down, you know, through this from the through the state that potentially we could have heard something this week and that about vaccinations. We haven't received anything definitive yet. But also, I'd been trying to play with, I don't know, be very imaginative and creative on how we how we implement or incentivize, I guess, incentivize the vaccinations for our teachers and staff. So I mean, for me, I personally, I would rather I'd really like to find a way to to incentivize it instead of mandate it. So in other words, use a carrot, not a stick. And so I've been having some conversations on what's the most effective. And so, you know, to frame the conversation for next week. So that's another reason that I I'm in in response to Mr. Jordan's question that I I wasn't able to answer definitively because I've been having a lot of different conversations on and looking into how other districts what their success has been with their approach to staff evac- evacuations and also evacuating student athletes. So, Ms. Smith, real quick, do you have anything? I just want to make sure we get a break in here before six o'clock.
Yes, and thank you. Similar to what Ms. Bassin has said, very interested in.
This is on mute. I can't hear.
It also interferes with their school and life balance, home life balancing, where parents are getting their kids some, I've been told, seven, seven or later. And when kids get home at that time, or even if it's five or six, it's difficult then to prepare them for the next day as well as responsibilities next day at school as well as responsibilities they have at home. So I think that is something that we really need to discuss.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I'm I'm just, I'm kind of nodding my head, not not to be not to cut you off or anything. I'm just nodding my head because I've experienced it personally. So I know that this transportation has been very challenging in this first week of school. So with that, thank you all for your comments. And I'd like to take a quick break so we can get our governance coaches online and everyone set up. Dr. Gabriel has now joined us. So I'd like to take about a five-minute recess to we also, if you ordered food, it's in the kitchen. So go ahead and grab a quick bite and we will rekindle, let's say, about six, six oh five. We'll we'll give it a little over five minutes, six oh five. Thank you. All right, good, good. All right, thumbs up. All right. Wow, it's nice to see everyone here. Carlos is joining us from the Cube Conference. So he's in Atlanta. Was it Atlanta? Carlos, are you there? Make sure he's back.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, are you are you in Atlanta?
I am in Atlanta.
Okay, just making sure I was correct in that. Okay. Okay, well, let's go. I'm gonna go ahead. Well, I want to welcome A J and Cindy, our coaches, governance coaches from the Council of Great City Schools. Thank you for being here this evening. And I'm going to hand it over to you guys to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So what will help us out is if everyone who, if board members who can have their cameras on, have their cameras on so that we can make sure that we're calling on folks when they are ready to contribute and
Cindy, I just want to add, we had just, we, some of us are eating at this point. We just took a a break to grab our dinners. So just just so you're aware, there we'll have the videos on, but some people will still be finishing up their meals.
Oh, that's fine. We're we're not offended by that.
Here are we waiting on? Okay.
And while we're waiting for cameras to come on, we're going to be moving into looking at the goals and guardrails with the annual targets and interim measures and interim measure targets that Dr. Birdsong provided to you all on Friday. So have that in front of you. And what we're going to do, we're going to be beginning with the goals. We're going to go through them one by one. And we'll first go through any technical questions that you might have for the superintendent, any questions you need answered for any clarification. And then we'll have that keep, delete, modify discussion similar to what we had the last time we were together. And we'll do that one by one through the goals, then we'll move through the guardrails with the same in the same manner. Are there any questions about? Yes, Mr. Clanton.
Thanks, Cindy. Not really a question, but a request. Can you just, I know we've had some time and we're coming back to this here. Can we just reiterate what the goals and guardrails are replacing, how they're going to be used, how this all kind of connects? Kind of big picture so that as we take this deep dive, we can see the bigger picture.
Sure. Yeah, so what we're doing is, and what you all are doing is working through your student outcomes focused governance journey. And the big point in that is developing goals and guardrails. And the goals are policy statements that you all develop, that you have listened to your community for their vision and values. You've looked at the data from your school district to develop the five SMART goals. And then the five non-negotiables, the five are four, you have four guardrails that the superintendent will guide the superintendent in developing a strategic plan for the district. And this will be the guidance, the lens through which the board makes decisions over the next, over the course of the span of the those goals and guardrails that are in the process of developing. So last time we were together, the you selected five goals and four guardrails with some preliminary data points that the superintendent have provided and made some changes to those. And the superintendent has been working on interim measures based on those changes and additions. And that's what you have in front of you. Then what will happen from here, once, once you have selected and adopted goals and guardrails, the superintendent will will be providing monitoring reports for you so you can monitor with frequency progress toward those goals and guardrails. And that will the idea being that you spend fifty percent of your time monitoring, discussing student outcomes. Is that responsive to your request?
It is. I just wanted to also raise the point that this will also become, I guess, the framework for which we would be evaluating, potentially evaluating our superintendent on, correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is, so this the goals and the guardrails and the superintendent's performance based on those is what will eventually become the superintendent's, what you, the board will be evaluating the superintendent on. And essentially, those conversations, those monitoring conversations that you have every month are every month are are pieces of of that evaluation. Um, and then the other point to make is that you will be developing more governance processes and governance improvements based on your desire to become more student outcomes focused. And that's where the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Manual comes in. That's where the self-evaluation process comes in. Um, and and based in board activities around uh working through that that uh Student Outcomes Focused Governance Manual, that instrument.
So essentially, in addition to that would be to um to provide clear direction to our superintendent and so that she can so she, so that we're intentional and what we're focusing on. And of course, there's the evaluation piece, but also so that we can spend more of our time, at least fifty percent, as Cindy previously said, on focusing on our ac- the academic achievement. And that's why um these goals and guardrails are very academic focused. And of course, once we achieve these, we can revise them um and, you know, move into other areas that may may need our attention um at that point in time.
Definitely. But there's one last point I wanted to 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 raise here, that even though this is laser-like focus for the board level, my understanding, um, this does not preclude the superintendent from being more expansive in their strategic plan um on how to address these from the administration level, correct?
Yeah, so this is, um, the the board is setting clear expectations for what they want the superintendent to achieve through the goals, those um those non-negotiables that that Dr. Birdsong needs to um honor uh and and to not offend in in her achievement of that. And then um, and then the, she selects the inputs and the plan uh to achieve that, those goals.
Thank you.
Any other?
Ms. Campson, Ms. Campson has her hand up.
Campson? Uh, you're on mute.
Oh, we got, thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I've spent quite a lot of, am I okay now?
Yes, I can hear you.
I spent a lot of time going through the guards and and um the um goals and guardrails. And a a couple of things really popped out at me that I was uncomfortable with. First of all, I think we all are on board with wanting to have our schools accredited. Certainly, that's something that I hear from parents. They're actually trying to, when they want to change schools or something, it's because the school that their child is in, it's not accredited. And yet, on our goals and guardrails, the only time the word accreditation appears in that is on, I think it's goal two. Wait a minute, it's one of the goals somewhere in here. Here it is on goal two, where it talks in general about uh black males, I think, or black subgroup will increase a percentage of, it will increase by certain percentages. That doesn't tell us about accreditation. And so I have a serious concern about going into a strategic plan that does not address our goals for getting our schools accredited. I think all of us know how important that is, especially when parents are looking for schools. And my child chose a city and a neighborhood, so he would put his children in a school that was a National Blue Ribbon School twice. That was his sole reason for the selection of the home he's living in. And he's not unusual. Parents, that's like a, even though accreditation is is just the floor, as we all know, it doesn't make you high performing, but it is the baseline floor. If you can't even make the baseline floor, then parents are very concerned. I'm very concerned as a member of the Norfolk School Board. So I have a serious concern about the lack of a focus anywhere, anywhere, no goal or anything about accreditation. So that's a very big concern to me. My second big concern is the slow expectations we have for children. I'm looking at one place where I think it was the uh students with disabilities, one of the, one of these, because they're all by subgroups, uh, which is another concern, but um, where they're going up from twenty-one to twenty-six is five years. So in five years, it's it's about, I think it's a reading score for African-American children. So they're saying forty-five, as of twenty-one, um, forty-five percent of that subgroup is on grade level with reading. They're working proficiently for reading. At the end of five years, the expectation we have for those children is sixty percent of them will be proficient. Five years of instruction, that's two percent a year they're going up. And at the end of five years, the best that we can go for is sixty percent of those children being proficient. I that's, I mean, I I couldn't even support that. How can that be your goal? After five years of focused instruction on reading and getting our kids where they need to be, and then we're saying, we, oh, great, we made sixty percent. That means forty percent of that subgroup of children are still not proficient. After five years of intense instruction in Norfolk public schools based on a strategic plan. And this is your plan? That's my question. As a parent, I would be saying, your plan is to is to get only sixty percent of our kids on grade level? What about the other forty? What about the other forty percent? If there are a hundred kids in third grade, that means that forty of those children, forty of those children at the end of our five years will not be performing on grade level, or we have no expectation for it. Talked about high expectations before. I will continue to talk about high expectations. Children live up or down to the expectations we have for them. And this document has low expectations for children. And I know that the children in Norfolk are able to be, are have the capacity, everyone, no matter what subgroup they're in, they have the capacity to work at a proficient level. And we don't seem to have the high expectations for them. If we think in five years, we only have to increase by two percent a year, and 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 only, we only go from forty-five, which is hard enough, but this is a tough year to have taken the SOL test. We all know that. Uh, so that's not the problem. The problem is, where do we expect to be in five years at the end of this? What is the goal? That's what strategic planning is. Where do you want to be? I don't want to be at a goal that says sixty percent that that are proficient and the other forty percent aren't. So I have serious concerns about that. And I'm just putting it out there now. I don't see how I could move forward with a a plan, a strategic plan, that doesn't have anything about getting our schools accredited in it, that doesn't have any type of high expectations and belief in our children. And they can do it. I've done it in a school, plenty of it. Dr. Birdsong has done it. You can have those high expectations and you can achieve them for your children. And so that's kind of where I am right now. I'm kind of hit a hit a wall. I've had some good conversations with the two people that were assigned to call me uh and talk to me about different things. And I've asked them questions. They've been very helpful, but it isn't changing how I'm feeling about this. And I spent, I mean, I have, look at this written all over, because I think the more I read it, and I mean, we we came into a room, we did some fast things together, and then boom, here are goals. That wasn't thoughtful. I mean, I was looking, listening to Dr. Uh, Dr., I'm sorry. Mr. Jordan, when he was saying about policies, we need more time to discuss things sometimes. We can't just go in, have a two-hour workshop, throw a bunch of ideas up, oh, who's for this one, who's for that one, and then that's your strategic plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campson. Um, so just to remind you that the goals are guidance for the superintendent's strategic plan. And there will be, um, I and Dr. Birdsong, um, I would imagine will be having, uh, will be addressing accreditation in her strategic plan as well.
So it sounds like you're saying, Cindy, that the superintendent can go through and make changes to those goals based on her expertise as the expert that we hired to do this kind of thing for us.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, right, you hired her as the educational expert to
That's right.
uh, select the inputs, but the the um role of the board is to to set the vision of the school district, to set goals collaboratively with the superintendent. Um, what the reason that there are five is because when you have more than five, the research supports that that you actually lose focus.
I I completely understand that, Cindy. Well, well, for us to strategic planning.
Okay, and so um, this is through, uh, this method is studying uh no more than five goals for the
That's not what I was talking about.
And um then the guardrails. So as we go through each of these goals, we will go through them one by one. If you have technical questions regarding uh the the annual targets, the interim measures, um, or need clarity on them from the superintendent, um, then then that will be the time to ask those questions. And um, then we can have that keep, delete, and modify discussion. So um, let's get, let's get started with that.
Goals are only to the intrums?
Um, the superintendent, the superintendent selects the interim goals, which are the measures by which
Hey, I'm sorry, I'm I'm I have to intervene here. Please refrain from interrupting when someone's speaking. I'd like to get through this in a very respectful way. Everyone deserves to be heard and have their time to speak. Okay, so Ms. Cindy, please uh explain, finish what you're explaining, and then we can uh answer any questions. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, let's let's just get, dig into this. Um, let's start with goal one. You've had this document. We're looking at goal one, looking at um the goal, the superintendent's interim measures that she's brought forward along with the annual targets uh for both the overall goal and for those interim measures. Does anyone have questions regarding um any, any questions for understanding or technical questions regarding those measures? Um, Ms. Bassin?
Thank you. Um, so my question, and I I had posed this to Dr. Birdsong earlier. And I think she helped me a little bit um in understanding the College Career Citizen Ready Indicator. But I think probably beneficial for the whole board to to kind of understand what that indicator represents. And is is that, is that indicator really getting us to what we heard from our community about being, you know, uh, citizen-ready and college and career and um or or would the profile of a Virginia graduate be um, the the more would that be more clear-cut than the CCCRI? So that's a question or a clarifying question I'm asking the administration right now.
So um, it was the board who went out and spoke to the community, so I can't address the piece about, is this what the community is is looking for? I would have to refer that back to the board members, because it was the board who went out and talked to the community, not the administration.
Okay, I'm, well, I I understand that, but I I'm, I guess I'm getting at, when we came together as a team to talk about um and review some of the things that we did hear from the community, um, you know, we shared that what we heard was um being life-ready, college and career-ready. And in those discussions, when we sat in this room and talked about it, um, you know, we shared that this indicator was going to be available, I believe, starting this school year, if I'm not mistaken, or is it next school year, twenty twenty-two?
It will be the data from this school year for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four accreditation year.
Okay, so um so my question to the board is, do we feel like this indicator is um really speaking to, or does it really allow us to best monitor how our students are doing college, career, and in terms of college, career and citizen readiness? Is my question, or do we? I mean, I don't know if anyone else had any thoughts on. I'm asking for a clarified question, because that indicator, from my understanding, encompasses CTE completion, correct?
Yes, yes, as I share with you.
Yep. And can you clarify that for the whole board, just so that we're all on the same page?
It looks at children who have taken advanced placement courses, children that have enrolled in IB or dual enrollment courses, children CTE completers that have credentials, also children that have engaged in some type of service learning and work-based learning experiences.
Okay, and then that's calculated into, that is kind of put together in a formula to calculate a particular number, correct?
That is exactly how the VDOE calculates it. They have their formula that they use to calculate their their index.
Okay, so, so, you know, I recall from the last time we did this training, you know, we look at the interim measures, which I know the administration develops. But I recall, you know, I can hear Cindy and AJ saying, well, if the interim measures are not exactly what what we were trying to get, is your goal as clear as possible? So that's why I'm asking that question. I mean, there are certainly pieces of this that that um, these these two interim measures do relate to the overarching goal. However, the one question, I guess I was looking back at the guardrail around the graduation rates and was thinking, is that an inappropriate place uh to put that there? And is that clear? Um, so I don't know. I appreciate the clarification. I don't want to belabor that. I if if, so, and the other thing, so based on that, the baseline right now is sixty-six percent. So we know what that formula is, which is how we arrived at this number, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, and and just quick before, and I'll call on you next, Ms. Smith. Um, but right now, we're we're getting questions answered regarding just for clarification, and then we'll move into that keep, delete, modify discussion. And um, Ms. Bassin, what you mentioned about if if the, if there is a belief that um, that the interim measures are not capturing uh the board's intent, then it's not yours to, it's it's not for the board to rewrite the interim measures. It's for the board to rewrite the goal with more clarity for the superintendent. And the superintendent's interpretation of that goal is uh defined through those interim measures that she's brought forward. So there will be that opportunity once everyone um has had the chance to ask their questions. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I got confused in the conversation uh that Ms. Bassin was just having. I don't understand how this school year is going to be used in the report for twenty-three, twenty-four? If that's the case, what data is being used to calculate the seventy-four percent this school year?
So Ms. Ms. Uh, Ms. Smith, we're calculating that internally. We're we're using the data that we have on hand to calculate that, because we know who our children are that are CTE completers. We know who the children are that are engaged in cooperative education experiences. We know that. So those are being internally calculated.
So we're you're using the same current year data to report in the current year? And then we're going to use that same to report in twenty-three, twenty-four?
So it will change every every year based upon how the cohort of of students, how they perform. So that will change annually. And we're hoping to get to, I believe it's ninety percent in twenty-five, twenty-six, but right now we're at sixty-six percent.
I'm still confused. I think I got confused because the statement was made that we would use twenty-one, twenty-two data to report in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes.
I can explain that.
Right, okay.
We, technically, it's like a year behind. Like, for example, if we were going to carry, schools were going to carry accreditation status for this year, it would have been based on last year's data. So whatever we, whatever we are able to achieve during this year will be reported So whatever we whatever we are able to achieve during this year will be reported into twenty three, twenty four data. As it relates to accreditation.
Okay, so I'm there.
Okay.
So then what data is being used to get to the seventy four percent this year?
So our baseline is is sixty six right now. But we, these are, these are the annual measures that we were asked to lay out to achieve the board's goal. I believe it was to ninety five, ninety percent, or was it eighty five, ninety percent? I think we changed it to ninety because we know we need to be at eighty five to achieve accreditation. So these, we were asked to come together. That's why my team is here, all the experts, Dennis Fuddy, Paul Patago, Mr. um Brady. So that we could map out, have targets every year that we could achieve. So that we could finally achieve the board's goal of ninety percent by June twenty twenty six. We're starting at sixty six percent, so we tried to project out from where we are today to where we want to be during the twenty five, twenty six school year.
So what what data, what year of data is going to be used to report? Or get to the seventy four percent this year?
So this, that will be based on this year's data.
Okay, I won't, I I don't get it because it's and it's probably just how I'm. Translating it. I don't understand how this year's data is going to be used to calculate this year's percentage. But it's also going to be used to calculate the twenty three, twenty four percentage.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's always a year, a year behind, a a year, we're going to use like the seventy four percent would be based on. Okay, completion's been, now you're confusing me, Ms. Smith.
Well, it's what I heard, it's what I heard was said.
We have a, we have a a year that the children engage in testing, a year that we collect the data. And then the state reviews that data. They use that data for the accreditation rating for the following year.
So wouldn't wouldn't what happened in twenty twenty one be used for the twenty one, twenty two year?
Yes, because we've been collecting data all along, even though it's not official by the Virginia Department of Ed. Although they are not using it for accreditation, we knew that they were going to begin using that. So we were trying to get ahead of that and start collecting that data.
That's still, that's still not a year behind from what was said, but I think I get it.
I'm sorry.
I'm I'm okay.
Okay.
Any any other questions? Mr. Jordan.
So uh I don't want to cause any more confusion, but just to the conversation it was just being had. I think that what Dr. Birdsong was speaking to was how this indicator will eventually be used. Towards accreditation.
Right.
But what we have before us is just simply how it's being laid out for us to track our progress. And I think when the comment was made about it being used at the state in a future year around accreditation. That's may have caused some of some of the confusion. Um my my.
Oh, okay.
My my question going to the interim measures. So we're working backwards, I guess. So in the in the last interim measure, there's an or. So there's advanced placement and or dual enrollment. So I just have a, I don't know if it's a concern, but I just want to raise that. I'm not sure with the and or what it really is telling us in terms of the percentages there. And I guess my my more technical question is, can you just kind of explain to me? Uh so with the uh overarching goal, we see from sixty six percent to ninety. And then we have interim goals in two areas that have been selected. Can you explain to me how the uh interim measures? Progress actually ties to the overarching goal progress? So for example, the dual, the the bottom one has two per two percent a year. The uh upper interim measure, uh one, one, two, two, two. But the overarching goal has larger growth percentages. So can you just kind of explain how it is that the interim measures progress at the rate that's being suggested? Um how that is impacting or ties into what we are seeing in terms of the projected percentage? Outcomes by year for the overarching goal?
Sure, that's a two-part question. I'm going to answer part one and have Dennis Fuddy, our expert, our statistician, to answer question two. As it relates to the CCCRI, again, we're looking at children who have completed a CTE course. And or like to your point, because the state only requires at least one of these activities from a student in a senior cohort. And that's why we included the language and or because it aligns with the state's language. So if we're looking at CTE certifications, that's a part of achieving the career, the CCRI. A student would be able to achieve that in the senior cohort. In addition, the second interim measure speaks to advanced placement and it speaks to dual enrollment. We didn't include IB because, as you know, there are specific criteria for children to be accepted into the program. That's a small cohort, et cetera, et cetera. But those two areas, AP courses as well as dual enrollment courses. If we have children who are completers in that area, we will get credit. The students aren't counted twice. If they do two courses, they're only counted once. And so all of those concepts, all of those areas are tied directly, aligned directly with the CCCRI. So if we increase, improve in those areas, we can expect the overall goal to improve. We can expect to achieve the goal and with as it relates to CCCRI. As it relates to the specific percentage points, I'd prefer that Dennis, our expert, give the explanation for that. Dennis, do you mind turning on your radio or your video? Yeah.
So while while we're while we're doing that, so just going back, so because it says and or. So we could have um, we could have no students that um. Matriculate through at least one advanced placement class, but we, but we could have.
Mr. Jordan, we're aligning it with the state's definition. The state uses and or when they're calculating CCCRI.
I I'm not, I'm not questioning what the state's, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding a scenario. So it is, it is possible then that we could have, uh and I'm just making this up, zero students that. Um matriculated through advanced placement and a thousand students that matriculated through dual enrollment. And that would obviously impact the uh the percentage based upon the the and or. So I guess what I'm really trying to say is why I understand that the state has combined the two together. Is there some value to us by having the AP piece of it separated out as a interim measure? And the dual enrollment as interim measure? So then we'll, we are able to then see the progress that we were making overall. But understanding that in the context of this is the progress that we're doing in an advanced placement. This is the progress that we're doing in dual enrollment. And where the two are, where we have students that are doing both, this is the progress that we're making with the with the two together. I guess that's what I'm asking.
I mean, it could be done that way. You could separate the two courses.
I'm like, do you see some, do you see some value in that? I guess it's what I'm. Talking to me?
Oh, that's me. I'm just, I don't understand why you do that. I mean, while it's possible that you could have or um why you'd separate them out. Because I think we could still get that information without adding it to the interim goals and guardrails, interim goals here, uh interim measures.
What I what I understand we were doing was that each board member was given the opportunity to ask, and I'm just asking. And so I like to get some feedback from the superintendent. And if it, you know, if it's not appropriate, fine, but I'm just trying to understand the connection between the. Percentages that we have for the interim measures and how it impacts the outcomes or the results that we're seeing with the annual measures. And right now, I can't follow how it fits. And so my questions may be totally off, but I don't know any other way to ask them at this point in time to get me better clarity than the way I'm asking.
So, Mr. Jordan, if you're increasing the number of children that end up with a CTE credential. If you're increasing the number or percentage of children that are um successfully complete a dual enrollment course. Or um um an AP course. Then you're going to be meeting the tenants of the CCCRI, which the board's goal right now is to increase it. From the baseline of sixty six to ninety percent in twenty twenty six. So I I do see the value in in more closely monitoring all of those areas and reporting out those areas. That we can, when we can do that, um, you know, throughout the school year. So yes, I do believe it's appropriate.
Yeah.
And then.
Uh I think Cindy said one.
Yeah, before we go to you, Ms. Basine, I think um um Mr. Fuddy was going to address Mr. Jordan's other question.
I think the uh we do separate those out in the accountability plan. So um, Mr. Jordan, the AP results are in the accountability plan separate. So that information is reported elsewhere.
The accountability plan is going away.
Right, but eventually it will be replaced by something, but for the current current iteration, it's that information is in. And will be reported the next iteration.
Is that, I guess my my question, I thought you were going to help me answer is, so in in the baseline that we have before us. We start with sixty six percent for the overarching CCCRI goal. The uh the first interim measure is at sixty seven percent, the baseline for the second measure is at twenty. So we're saying that the next CCCRI for twenty one, twenty two, we are projecting at seventy four percent. The interim measure, the first interim measure goes up by one percent. The second interim measure goes up by two percent. So I'd like to know if you can help me to understand how the first measure going up one percent. And the second measure goes up by two percent has impact on the seventy four percent outcome?
I told you. I told you, you want to respond? Well, there are other components to the measure, so.
Yes.
You know, and and this, these are, these are two that we pulled out that we feel would be major drivers. That we have good information on that would then drive towards improving that CCI completion in the next couple of years. So uh can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, just like what Mr. Fuddy was saying is the, there are two components that are not on here as interim measures. The workplace readiness is or the um, the work skills and the um, the um. Civic readiness piece. And the reason they're on there is because it's only an annual measure. And part of the the tool was that we had to have multiple measures during the year for the interim measures. So those will also have implication to the growth that will be seen on there. So it's not only these two measures that score on the CCCRI. So since they're not on there, because it's only one timestamp on it, th- those will also be a part of the measure. Which is why that growth will go faster than with the growth that we see in the certifications and the AP in dual enrollment.
I'll I'll yield full then whatever, but give that his opportunity.
Ms. Basine has had her hand up.
Okay, I just one, one, one quick thing. And and then I want, I do want to make sure that everyone has had a chance to speak. We'll go to you, Ms. Basine, but then I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak before we do a second round um with everyone, but go ahead.
Okay, well, I I just wanted to respond because this is exactly was the basis for my initial question around. Is the CCCRI really capturing um what the intent is based on what I've seen here with the interim measures? Um so I really appreciate the the background um that you're providing here right now because that's helpful to me. And I do support um breaking that out if we can put intentional focus on the, on each of the components. That feed into uh the the formula for the CCCRI. Um I think that would be helpful for us to um to examine. And my other question related to that is why, why just one AP class versus two perhaps? You know, so if you can help me, enlighten me on on that, that would be helpful.
It's in order, in order for a student to get a credit on the CCCRI, they have to take an AP course or a dual enrollment course. But if they take four AP courses and two dual enrollment courses, they're still accounted one. So it that's the minimum they have to meet is the the AP or dual enrollment. The reason we put and is there is because many students take both, but they, no matter what, one student counts as one student. No matter how many AP or dual enrollment courses they take, a student could take an AP, a dual enrollment, be in the IB program and get a certification. It's a count of one.
Oh.
So that that's why it's important, it's counted by student, not by course or certification.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's helpful to understand. All right, I'm done.
Okay, um who else that we haven't heard from yet? Dr. Gabriel or Mr. Platten? Or Dr. Martin? Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, and um. Did anyone? Uh Ms. Campson, did you have any specific questions regarding this goal or the interim measures?
I think she's might have.
She's left her seat.
Okay, um any other questions, Ms. Smith?
So the other elements that aren't included as interim because they're annual, like civic ready, workplace readiness. How can we report those internally also?
Uh those will be a part of the annual accreditation report in the future. Because there are, um you have the advanced coursework piece of CCCRI, which is the AP dual enrollment or IB. You have the career and tech education, which is the certification of completers, work-based learning, which are uh uh concepts that we've integrated into curriculum. And the service or the work-based learning, which students do on on uh within CTE courses, as well as service learning, which has been integrated into the curriculum. So every year, starting, this becomes a part of accreditation with the graduates of twenty twenty three. So it will be a part of the accreditation report and we can, we can make an annual report to you guys as well on those. It's just, we were told that the interim measures had to have at least three types of measurement during the year.
Okay. My concern is. There are more than just these two elements that go into. The overarching goal. And so. I think it would serve us well to be able to see how we're trending to that goal in totality. As opposed to seeing, let's say we make sixty eight here and we make um. The twenty two, but we don't make the seventy four. So I think we need to see. Why, unless you're saying to us, these two alone will get us to the seventy four, but I don't think you said that. I I think the other ones have to be, yeah, and have to be taken into consideration. So I'm.
And I, Ms. Smith, if I may, we struggled with that as well. And and we originally, we we had items like that on here, but it wasn't, it it's a, it's a one-time measurement. It's not something that we can report to the board multiple times over the year. So we were told that we had to take it off because it's a one-time measurement.
Okay, I'm still, I'm on the fence. Because I just can't see clearly how we're going to. Again, we can make these, but still miss the overall target. I'm, I'm, I'm okay. Yeah.
I guess, I don't know if I'm on or not.
Ms. Mart, uh, Dr. Martin?
I can't see my, I have too many things open on my screen. Am I, okay, I'm on, um. I guess what I'm curious about is what is the likelihood that the other indicator would keep us from missing the goal set here?
So we've worked pretty diligently over the past year to create several service learning opportunities in a variety of courses in high school. And the service learning is more than just going and working a poll for a day. It's planning, it's finding a community need and, and going through with the process of actually improving your community, doing service learning. So there will be several students in classes from ninth, twelfth grade that have multiple opportunities for service learning during their four years of high school. So I, I, the service learning is, is, is a, a a very important part of C C C R I, it's a civic readiness piece of it. And, and, and we truly believe that we're gonna, we're gonna meet the, meet the mark with the service learning in combination with still continuing to focus on our growth of C T E and certifications and our growth with the, um, with the advanced coursework.
So, um, through that logic, is that why you felt comfortable bringing this forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
The two, are these the two larger weighted items?
They're all equally weighted.
Oh, okay. So it's just check the box, done, 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 done.
Well, we'd like to think it's more than just check the box. There's a lot of work involved for the students to be successful here.
Yeah, I don't want to take away from that.
If, if, if a student only does service learning and does not do an advanced coursework, isn't a C T E completer and doesn't do a work-based learning, um, opportunity, they still get credit for the C C C R I because they did the civic part of it and which is the service learning. And this, again, the service learning isn't just an easy check of the box, it's, it is, it is very in-depth of what they have to do to, to get that credit.
Okay.
Well, that, that's, I guess where I get back, sorry. Am I allowed to?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's kind of where I go back to is for, for me, you know, speaking, obviously as an individual member, I, I'm thinking an and with each of those components, not or, like that they do one of those things. So I guess I, I'm, I'm struggling with that.
But again, whether they do one or multiple, it's still one.
I know, which is, which then goes back to, is that the right, is the use of the C C R I? What the, the right piece to capture what, what we collectively said, you know, is what we want to monitor.
So, and you've said that, and so I, I would like to understand, um, Dr. Poole, in your discussion, what are the, um, the strengths and weaknesses of using this as an indicator of life ready?
Well, so I think the, I don't think, the C C C R I was developed to support the profile of a graduate, which you had brought up, Ms. Bassin. This is the way the state is measuring, um, movement towards the profile of a, of a graduate that they developed a few years ago. Um, I, I think when we first looked at this goal, it was life-ready. And we struggled with defining what does that really look at? Well, down to the core of it, with a measurement that has, you took honors or advanced coursework so that you're, you're college-ready. You've earned a certification, so you're career-ready. You've done work-based learning, so you're career-ready, or you've done a service learning, um, you know, had a service learning opportunity and completed that so that you, you've really got that civic responsibility. You know, as far as being able to measure it, this, the state has done a lot of research on this to put it into place, and I do think it's a good tool for measurement. You know, and I think, you know, as we, as we progress, the state may change how it, how it looks at it, but for now, to start with, to make an eighty-five percent benchmark score, I don't think a lot of divisions would make it if we had the word and between all of these. You know, maybe the, the and could be between the, the, the three advanced coursework, C T E, work-based. But right now, it's not there, and I think for measurement purposes, I think it's wise to put out what the state is putting towards with accreditation.
Yeah. Okay, so I see this as a really good start and a great conversation. What I'm taking away from this is that, you know, we do, it, it's, I, I don't see how it would benefit us from selecting something completely different from what the state's doing to measure. I think that if this is accounting for accreditation, then this should be the way that we measure career ready, career life readiness. It doesn't mean let me think about this, doesn't mean that we can't re-approach this and refine it in years to, you know, years to come. If I'm not, we find that there's a more accurate way to measure life and career and college-ready. Am I wrong? Correct me if I'm wrong.
We, we suggest that you keep your goals for three years, at least, yeah, before modifying.
Right.
Ms. Smith?
One more quick question. Again, what's preventing us from including the other two? Although they're reported annually, um, from the state, what prevents us from re- reporting interim internally? Does that make sense? Where we include them in there because we know how it's calculated and we have the data in-house to include it and do a um, interim report that leads us up to the final.
So many of the, the, um, work-based learning and the service learning would happen in the spring because you build up to those activities. So if we reported like on a quarterly, it might be zero percent, zero percent, zero percent target. So it doesn't make sense as much to do it because we wouldn't have, we just wouldn't have completion until the end of the school year necessarily with some of those items, with many of those items.
That makes sense.
Okay, any, any other questions regarding the interim measures? Then, now we're gonna come to the keep, delete, modify um, conversation, and so I am just going to call on each of you. Um, and you can let me know, keep, delete, model, modify. Um, Dr. Martin?
Keep.
Um, Mr. Clanton?
Keep.
Ms. Campson?
Keep.
Keep. Dr. Gabriel?
Wish to thumbs up.
Yeah, keep. Uh, Mr. Jordan?
Just for clarity, we're talking about the goal itself?
The goal itself.
Yep.
Yes, I like to keep the goal and then also like to make sure I'm have clarity if we are breaking out the, uh, AP and dual enrollment on the interim measure.
You are not, those are, that, those measures are Dr. Birdsong's and I, and Dr. Birdsong, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, um, those are being kept that way.
Well, I thought she said the opposite, that's why I was asking.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, we, we would like to, we have spent so much time on, on this document, we have gone round and round backwards and forth, so a- at this point, I would not recommend that we change.
Ms. Smith?
Keep.
Miss Bassin?
Keep.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to goal number two. Any questions? Um, technical or clarity questions for the superintendent? Ms. Bassin, do I see your hands? Nope.
Ms. Campson has her hand up.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Campson?
Uh, yes, I have question, I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, why we are only having e- expectation for our children that is so low. That I have a concern with that, if I look at the goal, um, the, of the subgroups, and this is the achievement gap goal, where it, where it does touch all of our, our subgroups. And we start them at one level, um, and, and the, and the, and the, uh, the gap should be, it's actually, this is my least offensive one of these, uh, goals, because in some places I see a good a closure of the gap. For example, in the first goal, uh, first interim, I see reading at twenty-six and it goes down to eleven of gap, not where we want to be, we should be under five. After five years, with five years, that is disappointing, but I could see that it might be considered reasonable, the twenty-three to eight. But, um, I just feel like we need to take a step back and say, what are we really satisfied with? Because if you get into math, and I know math got really killed this year with the virtual learning, but we're starting with, you know, fifty-three percent gap and we're getting it down to thirty-eight, and thirty-eight in itself is something to cry about when it comes to achievement gaps among subgroups. So I'm not quite sure, you know, where to, um.
I can't follow what, what we're.
Oh. Thanks. Okay, you're right, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. All right, never mind, I'll save it for when I get to the right goal. These goals are making me crazy.
All right, goal two.
So, goal two, what questions? Does anyone have any questions, um, regarding the targets, interim measures, Mr. Jordan?
The, uh, third interim measure with the blanks, can that be explained again, please?
Yes, so basically, Mr. Jordan, this year will be the first year that the V D O E will administer their reading and mathematics growth assessments. And so we don't, we won't have baseline data until we actually administer that test this fall. So that's why you see create baseline, because there is no baseline now, now because the data, they don't exist, because the test hasn't been administered, but it will be in the fall.
So, uh, considering that, and, because I think this may go back to, we were having the conversation before around the goal of, um, looking at growth versus, versus actuals. Considering that the growth measure is all to be determined, how does it impact the annual measures for the, for the goal?
So, and I, and my team has done an exceptional job explaining, I'll do big picture and you can do details, Dr. Poole. So at the end of the day, Mr. Jordan, we expect our children to go, to grow, then if they don't grow, they're never going to meet these goals. So we felt like it was critical to include a goal in there that would, would focus on that growth piece. Eventually, you know, are, we, we're gonna get points for that, of course, through the accreditation model, and even if we don't achieve this goal right here, this goal number two, some of our schools will still be fully accredited, they, they will meet that goal. But we see the importance and value in measuring and monitoring growth of our children. And so that's why we thought it was critical to add that as one of the goals. So it will be looking at the growth from the fall administration to the spring S O L test.
Right, so, just, just, so I'm, just from my perspective, I'm a, I'm a growth advocate, so I don't have any, I don't have any, any issue with that. I'm saying that what we have here are interim measures and what we have are goals. So the goal says, uh, is focused on the proficiency rate for black students will increase from forty-three percent to seventy-five percent. And then there's one interim measure that speaks to the star reading, which I think I understand the connection between that and the, and the goal. And then the second one deals with PALS, I think I understand the connection between that and the goal. But then when I come to the reading growth assessment, why, why I understand it as an important goal is something that we should be measuring and performing on as a school division. I just don't see it as a interim measure that ties directly to the I, I don't see, I, I see how, I think I understand how the progress of the goal would be reflective of the growth. But I don't think I follow how, at this point in time, um, something that's to be determined, how that ties into the actual annual measures for the goal, goal as we have it currently defined.
Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Jordan, that as children grow, they'll, they'll reach proficiency?
I don't know, no, I hope so.
Okay, well, that's what we are hoping, we know that will happen. When, you know, our children, if, with all that we have in place instructionally, we're expecting our children to grow. And so as they grow, they become proficient. And the more children we have that are demonstrating proficiency, we're going to meet the school board's goal number two.
I, I have to think some more.
Okay.
But that was my, that was my question.
We don't have data because that, the test will not be administered until this year, it's a new test, it's a new test, a new assessment.
Ms. Bassin?
Thanks, um, so along those same similar lines, um, so, I mean, you clarified that each of these interim measures correlate with this overarching goal. Um, the, the question I have, um, so this I guess the K, the K through second grade, right, I'm understanding, so the second graders can take the PALS or the STAR, or, I mean, and the STAR. They take both, and just the second graders do, right? Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, um, that point, okay, that, that was all, I just want a clarification on that.
This game, or Dr. Gabriel?
So my concern with this goal, and I'm gonna use this goal to highlight the concerns with that, that I have with a couple of them, is that I understand that we want the goals to be very narrow-focused and it gives us an opportunity to be laser-light focused on a couple of items. And when Dr. Birdsong and her team did the needs-based assessment, there were a couple of categories that were extremely glaring that came out. And I would say that the glaring points, um, were these things that have come out in the polls. But when we put this out as a board and we say, you know, we're gonna focus on this group, what I don't want the interpretation to be is what happens with the other groups. And I know that's not the case, I know that's not how we feel, but that is a concern that I have. And I, uh, the guardrails that are in, I'm sorry, the interim measures that are in place here, I think are right, um, because we can get analysis on them, and with regards to the last one interim measure, since this is a new test, it'll give us the opportunity to see if it does correlate with proficiency in reading or not. It'll be a trial for not just us, but everybody else in the state, as it's gonna be a new test. So we might as well measure it and see how we're doing with it, and it's always good to celebrate growth when we do have growth. It's a good positive reinforcement tool for our teachers and staff. But I see this goal as very important, going back to Ms. Campson's conversations that she would always have with us about achievement gaps. When she would say, when she looked at her analysis in order to meet school accreditation, she figured out this formula. If you focus on your gap groups, you're gonna bring up your level of proficiency, you're gonna meet that baseline standard, which again, is baseline. And then, then you start to focus on everything else thereafter. And so I see this as that formula to get us there. But while we are having this conversation, I also want us to continue to reiterate. This is our focus because this was what was glaring out of the benchmark assessments. But we are going to have focus and intentional instruction on all of our students who are not. Who are who are meeting the standards, who are not meeting the standards and those who are proficient, we are going to continue to lift them up. And so that is my internal concern with goals such as this. And the interpretation that others might have with these types of goals. Because when I went through and looked at this, I saw that we took the guardrail out that says we will not. Let other groups fail while we focus our intention on those groups. So that is what I wanted to kind of highlight. With regards to, you know, using this goal as an example.
Thank you. Ms. Camson.
Thank you. Now that I'm on the right page, I just wanted to say. On this particular one that the I like it. I like the way it's closing the gaps. Five years, you'd like to see everyone no more than a five percent gap or lower. But it's it's heading there. And I know when these were done by the superintendent's team, they were sticking to what was down. But maybe put on her by the board. But I just want to make sure that when we do this. That we're remembering that we can go past this. So when I look at math. And fifty nine percent is our baseline and after five years, we still have thirty eight percent of our children who are not proficient. It's goal two. Oh. You know. Maybe it's time for me. I know I had that little experience with my puppy. Sorry. All right, I am on goal two now. Sorry, actually put the paper down. First of all, we're using star here and everyone knows that the the superintendent and her team have looked at that to. Make sure that there's a high. Match between what they get on kids get on star, how close that aligns star lines very, very tightly with our S O Ls. So that's why stars are good instrument to use for anything we do like this. And also because we can administer it quickly. So there's a good reason for it being star, and I did hear that mentioned. But having said that, I still can send it, look at these percentages. And I'm not happy with them. I mean, and and they're set by the goal that the board set, not by the superintendent who just used used those as she was supposed to. But if we start with a baseline of forty three percent. These are our black children. Who who we are trying to really make sure we lift up. And at forty three percent, and I know this is everything's really low now, and that's how that goes. But at the end of five years. Five years, we're only at sixty. We're only at sixty. That means forty percent of our African American children still are not reading proficiently. And so and if you look across. For the next one, it's the. The kindergarten through grade two, we start with fifty five percent. And it needs to drop here. And it drops to forty percent, which means sixty, you know, you still got forty percent that are not performing at a proficient level. So once again, and I'll say this each time we come to these academic ones. And I will say it is that we have set too low of expectations for our children. Because right here, this is one of our, this is our major subgroup. And we do not seem to have the expectations that these children are going to be able to read. At a proficient level after five more years of our instruction. So if you walk into a classroom when you're one. And you're not proficient. You know, you've got a forty percent chance of not being proficient by the end of fifth grade. I think that that's something that we need to think about. So that's my two cents on this. And this, by the way, is where we have a little little accredited word. But it's not really looking at the accreditation of our schools. It's looking at something else. All right, thank you.
For Dr. Burdson, would you be able to speak to the increases and whether and the. Expectation of moving students from forty three to seventy five percent. By June twenty twenty six and to the concerns Ms. Camson expressed.
I absolutely can. Like Ms. Campson, I have high expectations for all children. I do believe all our children can achieve at high levels. We were asked, the board was asked, the governance team was asked to look at developing SMART goals. So one of the the, if you're looking at our as as a part of SMART, realistic. So what we were charged with as we were developing the comprehensive needs assessment. Was looking at our data and our trend data over the last several years, which we did. And so based on the trend data, we looked at also knowing that we are coming back from where we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Right now, coming back from our children being out for a year and and not receiving in person instruction. We have no idea what these results are going to look like. We don't have a a a game book that we can look at to 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 kind of. Foresee, you know, where we're going. We do believe that realistically, again, of course, we want one hundred percent of our children to be proficient. But based on the data that we have reviewed, the trend data for at least the last couple of decades. We believe that we are being realistic and we're hoping to certainly exceed. You know, the trends that we have observed over the last several years. So while I agree with Mrs. Campson sentiment, at the end of the day, one hundred percent, all means all equity and excellence for all. We were asked to look at something that was also realistic and we did so looking at trend data.
Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I. Would like to speak in support of. Mrs. Camson's comments. So as we were doing the needs assessment and as we consider the impact of the pandemic. I think not just Norfolk, but across the state. There was a lot of encouragement about not looking at. Where we were in twenty eighteen nineteen. Because we didn't do any accreditation in nineteen twenty because of the pandemic and where we are now. But I but I have. Support for Ms. Camson's point because prior to the pandemic, the last accreditation year that we. That we did have data. At least based upon the school quality profile site. Black students were at fifty seven percent in Norfolk schools. And then we had the pandemic year where we are now, we're at forty three percent. So based upon the percentages that we have now. We it would take the end of the twenty two twenty three school year just to approach where we were. At the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen school year. So. Whether or not seventy five percent is the right number. Or not from the twenty five twenty six. I I would like to. Be in support of us looking at. Being able to accelerate. Or be more aggressive in those goals. Especially since, if I understand Cindy correctly. The goals are over a three year period. We have all these pandemic resources that are coming in over a two to three year period. It would seem to me that if we did. Put forward more aggressive. Goals based upon where we were and where we are now. And then tied our. Funding and other supports around it that perhaps we can be. I don't know if aggressive is the right word, but. More aspirational, if you will, in terms of. The goals as they're currently laid out, especially from the forty three. And not getting to a fifty six until. Twenty two twenty three, just like somewhere should be some acceleration. And as I read it right now, it's six, seven, six, seven. And it just seems to me it's somewhere it could be some type of curve that. As we move forward, that the growth rate. Or the increase rate would be. Higher than than what's currently laid out right now.
I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Jordan. May I respond? Dr. Martin, may I respond? So I I can appreciate that, Mr. Jordan. So I have just a couple of thoughts around that. While these goals may be aspirational to the board, these are going to be goals that I'm going to be evaluated against. And 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 while, you know, again, one hundred percent, we we need to ensure that we have. High expectations for all of our children. Is that realistic? Have we ever achieved that before in this school division or or, you know, any other school division for that matter? So I would just ask that you consider that as as you're thinking about that. In addition, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And while we might have a lot of financial resources coming our way. At the end of the day, it is the classroom teacher that's going to make the difference for these children. And as you know, with with all of the the national crisis with a teacher, teacher shortages and and looking at. Our data for Norfolk Public Schools and where we are. I I am just, and and it's not an excuse, I just want to, you know, put the realities out there. We we just don't know what schooling is going to look like in the next couple of years. And and while we're in person today, as we know, looking at our local data, data. The metrics are very concerning. We know that we're required by state law that offer in person instruction. Five days a week to our children, which we are doing and will do because we will comply with the law. But as you know, there'll be children and staff in and out of our buildings every day because they're being quarantined. And that's the reality. And I don't see that changing anytime soon. And so I again, I just I'm saying all of that to say this. If we're going to have SMART goals, they need to be realistic as well. And while they may be aspirational for you, there'll be something that I must achieve on an annual basis.
Just for clarity.
Could I just have one clarification? I wasn't asking for a hundred percent.
Oh, no, no, and I'm not saying that.
I'm sorry, it sounded like you were saying that I certainly wasn't asking for a hundred percent. I was asking for seventy five and seventy.
Yeah, and I was going to say the same thing that I didn't, I wasn't suggesting that seventy five should be a hundred percent. All I was saying is. As I understood what Ms. Camson was saying, which I was offering support. Was that the growth percentages by year could be more aggressive, even if they started off initially slow and then. Had a higher curve as you approached the twenty five twenty six school year. That's what I would say.
Right, and I agree with that, but three but three percent each year for five years. Doesn't move your kids a lot and we are getting a lot of resources coming in. I certainly understand what what Dr. Burdson is saying. But five years and we still don't have, I mean, if we're asking for seventy five percent in reading and fifty in math. That still leaves a fourth to almost a third of your children non proficient after five years. No, I'm not saying a hundred percent, not at all. I'm not saying ninety percent, which is your high performing schools. Just saying, let's just make the baseline, the baseline. And the baseline is seventy and seventy five. And that's what I would. Ask for. For our board so that we have a reasonable expectation that we can at least get a fourth. Of our children, I mean, we could at least get seventy five, seventy, seventy five percent of our children proficient after the end of five years. And it's and it is going to be a burden to get it done this first year. But that's why we're getting all the extra help with the money. Doesn't mean it's going to make it perfect or anything. But I think that it it I don't think I know it's doable. So that's where I'm at. Please, at no time did I say a hundred percent here. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Ms. Basim.
Thanks. I I too. Support what Ms. Camson and Mr. Jordan were both suggesting. I just want to be. So there were a couple of comments, but I just want to be sure that we're looking at the same draft. So for twenty five twenty six, I have seventy five percent. As the target. Is that what you all have? Yeah? Do you do you have seven? Because I thought I heard you say sixty and I wasn't sure. Yeah, so did you? Yeah.
All right, goal two, I'm looking at our goal, not the not the in between things. And it has the baseline at forty three and the twenty six, twenty twenty six at sixty, which is a seventy.
Oh, it's.
This is the one I had. Why do I have this one? Let me see, could I see yours?
Oh, because that's why I thought I heard something different and I was like, wait a minute, do I have the right?
Yeah, I've got seventy five as well.
Oh, okay. Well, since we're having this really good discussion about this, I wanted to be sure we're.
Thank you, everyone, because I thought I've gone crazy for the last week thinking, what kind of expectation? Why do I have the wrong one? It was in my, it's in my big notebook for this training.
So actually, it is updated.
So actually, it has what I wanted, which was seventy five.
Is that, isn't seventy five the state benchmark?
It is a state benchmark. Now, and these, these are not S A scores, they're they're the.
We're talking proficiency. We're looking at proficiency. The board is looking at proficiency. Remember you lots of.
Proficiency or S A scores. Proficiency or the S A scores.
We're looking at proficiency, the reading proficiency rate.
Look at this now.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Basim, did you have?
Yeah, I do. Well, that that was my, initially I was hearing numbers and it wasn't matching with what I had on my paper. But the other thing is, did I, did did I hear in our previous, you know, academic updates? Us potentially using. I ready, I ready software?
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if Dr. Paul can answer that. So are we are we using I ready to look at?
Yeah. Growth also? Yes, I don't talk this.
Did you hear what I said? Oh, I said, are we are we using I ready? At all to look at growth?
Not right now. We're using the star, we're using pals, we're using a few other programs we're putting into place this year. But star and pals, as well as the the new growth assessment are the ways we're measuring.
Okay, all right. I was just curious because I've. I feel like I've heard that on school. I I wasn't sure if that was something we were using across the board. And all of our schools, but. So to go back to what Ms. Camson and Mr. Jordan were saying. I do support. You know, more aspirational targets. Not to say that what we have here, I understand the the being realistic. But I also think that if we were at fifty six percent. I feel like we can aim a little higher and I'm not saying a hundred percent, but I'm I'm saying aim a little higher. So I do support that. That's all.
Ms. Smith or Mr. Clanton or Dr. Martin, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions, but I do support aiming just a just a tad higher. Maybe five percent or something like that towards the end.
Mr. Clanton, did you say no questions? You're on mute. You're on mute.
So sorry to put myself back on mute. That when we got to twenty twenty six, we would essentially be going through this process again to kind of map out the next five years, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Or or if you hit it before twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to continue to thrive. My thing is, I do want to just be realistic in the respect that. We have to look at where we're going. And I mean, I see some large numbers here in growth. And I just have to reiterate, you know. The Dr. Burson made it very clear, you know, we can put as much money as possible, but if we don't have the teachers in the classroom and that's something that we still have to look at. And, you know, I'm I'm all for it. I'm I'm pushing this here, but I think the seventy five is good right now. And if we reach it before then, then we come back. This is a living document from my understanding, so we can make adjustments as we go. That's all.
Dr. Martin, any any questions or? Okay, so this is the point in time where we'll go around with the delete or modify. So Dr. Martin. So Dr. Martin, keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
Ms. Basine?
I just have a suggestion for modifying the language to match, it to be the percentage of students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase. I'm just...
She's offering a modification to the goal?
Oh, to the overall goal?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it.
Yeah, and not in content, in just, it's more the language. And saying the percentage of students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase, blah, blah, you know, the rest of what's written there.
The percentage?
Yeah, the percentage of students proficient in reading based on the SOL test. I mean, sorry, the percentage of black students proficient in...
So it's still the same content?
That's what it says.
It says the SOL reading proficiency rate. So I'm just matching the language that is throughout.
I think with the language as it's written, it looks at increasing the rate in a way that doesn't, I guess, single out the population, the subpopulation as the subject. I think it reads differently.
No, that's...
Can you write, can you state exactly how you're proposing to change it to?
The percentage of black students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase from 43% in June of 2021 to 75%. Or if we're agreeing to increase that target to 80% by June 2026. I don't know if there's agreement on increasing the...
What, how does? I'm just trying to understand, how does that change what's being said here?
She's aligning the verbiage that is in the interim measures so that the goal and the interim measure language is consistent. That's what is...
Right, okay, I see what you're saying. Sorry, I couldn't figure it out. I wasn't sure what you were asking, okay.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing two separate modifications here. Let's take them one at a time. First, the language, to change it to read as the interim measures do. The percentage of black students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase from 43%. That's one modification. Let's go around on that one to see who is in support of the language modification. Dr. Martin?
As long as it says the same thing, I'm really, I guess, sure, yes. I'm not against it, I'm not for it, just, sure.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
No objection.
Dr. Gabriel?
Doesn't matter to me.
Ms. Campson?
That's fine.
And Mr. Clanton?
It's fine.
Okay, so that modification can be made. And then, so now we're looking at the modification. If I heard Ms. Basine correctly, the percentage of black students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase from 43%.
In June of 2021?
Yeah, in June of 2021. To 80% in June, by June of 2026. Did I capture that correctly?
So you're saying to 80% and so 75%?
Yes.
And the minimal pass rate is 75, correct? Great, yeah.
Okay, so based on that modification, I will go around to see if there is support of the board for that or not. We'll start with Dr. Martin?
I'd like to keep that as is.
75%. Mr. Clanton?
I agree, keep it as is.
Ms. Campson?
All right, I'm a little stuck on this because I would like to see this, and this is a new thought, is that, that goal two and goal four should be combined. Because if I go through this, we definitely want to do everything we can for our African-American children. We want them to get up and be performing as high as anybody else in the whole world. But we do have other students in our schools. And so if we look at goal two, it only looks at reading rates and proficiency for our black students. And if we look at goal three, we look at our students with disabilities. And if we look at goal four, we're back to our black students. So the only place that we mention all of our students, our black students, our white students, our Asian students, et cetera, is in goal five, where we look at the third graders of all of our students. So I'm not quite sure. And that's, that's a big change from what we had on the original one. And I can see all the cleaning up that was done with the wording and the goals. So I think that's great. The wording was much improved. But I'm looking at now, that I finally have the correct piece, a concern I had that wasn't there before. But we totally, I mean, we totally ignored a large percentage of our children here. And they all, not all of our, not all of our white children are getting proficiency rates on the test. There are many of those that need help. The same with our Hispanic children, which we're getting an increasing population of. They're not mentioned at all. So I can't vote either way on this one because I'm concerned with the fact that we have, we're not doing anything for every student, every student. So I've lost it when we, when I go down through the thing and I see that we haven't included our entire student body in our goals to reach and make more of our children proficient. So I'm going to have to not be able to vote on this.
So you're passing on the modification on the table. Dr. Gabriel? Changing it to 80%? Support, in support of that or of keeping it 75?
No, just leave it as it is. But I do agree with Ms. Campson. I understand where she's coming from.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Or?
Ms. Smith?
I support the 80%. If we look at it over the period of a five-year stretch, you're only talking about roughly a percent or so more than what's already here. And that's not, that should still be attainable.
And Ms. Basine, you offered it, so right now, I have it that there are three in support, three not, and one has skipped. So it will stay at 75% and will move to goal three.
Cindy, I have a question. So you were going around asking each person if they wanted to keep, modify, and delete?
Oh, that's right, yes. We stopped there, didn't we? I lost it on that, through the conversation. I apologize for that. So I started with Dr. Martin and then went to Ms. Basine. So, and has anybody else gone on the keep, delete, modify? No, okay. So, Mr. Jordan, keep, now we have it, the percentage of black students proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase from 43% in June 2021 to 75% by June 2026. Keep, delete, or modify?
So I still have a modify, but I have a question of clarification. So the goal, does the goal include the text and the annual measures?
The annual targets are what the superintendent has brought forward as what they believe that they can achieve year by year through their implementation.
So the board, the board doesn't modify the annual measure, it's just the overarching goal?
The overarching goal.
Since 80% was voted down, then I don't know how to impact the annual measures. But what I was saying earlier was that I thought the annual measures could be adjusted so that we would hit either 75% sooner. But in the absence of there not being board support for being more aggressive towards the end goal, I'm not sure how to then have a modification that would then impact the annual measures. And I don't want to equivalent by 75, 76, 77. So I think we should be able to accelerate, but I don't see that there's board support for that. So no point putting the same modification forward if there's not support for it.
So keeping with the 75%?
No, I want to modify, but...
Oh, your modification, okay. So what is your modify?
I'm just, I don't have support for it. I don't want you to...
You want to modify, but...
But I don't have support for it.
Well, you don't know until you do it. What is it you want to put on?
We just went around and voted on it.
Oh, you want to, okay.
I wanted...
Yeah, I understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted us to be more aggressive in hitting annual targets. But the annual targets are based upon the overarching goal. So there's not board support for increasing 75 to a higher number. Then I guess the only thing we can do is just say to the superintendent is, we hope you will be more aggressive in your annual targets. So, but if I understand the process correctly, that's about the extent that we can influence what we like to see with the annual measures is by being more aggressive in the goals. And I think we should modify the goal, but I'm not aware that there's, based upon the vote we just took, it's not supported. But I want to be noted as modify.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clanton, keep, delete, modify. And this is the goal with the new language that everyone supported around the percentage of black students proficient in reading based on the SOL test. Keep, gotcha. Dr. Gabriel, keep, delete, modify?
Keep it.
Ms. Smith, keep, delete, modify?
Based on my previous response, it's modified, but there's no sense in identifying that modification. It was the 80% because there's no support. So we don't need to go around, but I lean more towards modifying it.
And Ms. Campson, keep, delete, modify?
Modify.
And what was your, what would your modification be?
To add math to this, so reading and math for our black students, for us to look at is together in one goal.
Okay. So Ms. Campson has offered a modification of the goal to include reading and math into one goal?
Which would free goal four for the students.
Ms., Dr. Burtsong?
I was just going to remind the board that the administration did combine the goals. In the beginning, it was the board that modified it.
Well, we're starting again.
Okay.
Look at all of our students.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. So the modification, and let's do it this way, but keep your thumbs up if you are in support of the modification that Ms. Campson offered to combine math and reading into one goal. Or, so if you're in support of that, please put your thumbs up. So I see Ms. Smith, Dr. Gabriel, and Ms. Campson. Is that correct? Did I miss anyone? Okay, so...
Ms. Smith had her thumb down, right?
Oh, some, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, there is a thumb down.
Okay, so there were two in support of combining. Okay, so this goal stays as it is. And I believe everyone has had an opportunity to offer a modification. And so goal two with the rewrite of language, but the same baseline and target is what has been selected. And now we'll move to goal three. First, again, any questions for the superintendent regarding the progress measures, the annual targets, or the interim measure annual targets? And before, and before we start this, is there support for rewriting the language in the same way for the remainder of the goals rather than going through that modification?
Yes.
Can I get a thumbs up from everyone? So it would be the percent of students with disabilities is how the goal would start? If you're in support?
Could you read the whole thing, how it's, so I can hear how it sounds with this one?
It would be the percentage of students with disabilities proficient in reading based on the SOL test will increase from 29% in June of 2021 to 40% by June 2026.
Okay, that's great. That was just Tanya? Okay, thank you. That's much better SMART goal.
Okay, and so are we good in just switching to that language? If not, okay, it looks like we're in support of that. So we know that that's, okay.
I had to modify.
No, no, it's just about, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure we're all in support of just changing the language and putting that out on the table and getting that complete. Yep, okay. So now, any questions for the superintendent on the interim measures? Or annual targets?
Oh, I do have one.
Ms. Campson?
And I'll just ask Dr. Burtsong, why, when you were using STAR and PALS, why we did not use STAR for the second grade? Unless I'm reading it wrong. It says, oh, never mind, it does say it. It says two, and then you also used the kindergarten one also. Okay, never mind.
Anyone else? Okay, so with this goal, Dr. Martin, keep, delete, modify?
Keep.
Mr. Clanton?
Keep.
Ms. Campson?
Wait a minute, hold up, let me go back. So this is what Ms. Campson just proposed, the combination?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to propose.
No, that got voted down.
We're not voting, that got voted down first.
Then we're keeping, I'm good, okay.
Ms. Campson?
Add math.
Okay, Ms. Campson?
Both those core subjects.
Okay, Ms. Campson has proposed a modification of combining reading and math into one goal. I, can I see a thumbs up for those in support? Okay, two in support, so that modification...
Didn't we just do this?
We did that for the. We did it for goal two.
Black children, now we're doing it.
We offered it for goal three, we're on goal three now. Okay. Okay, um, Dr. Gabriel, keep, delete, modify?
Um, goal three right now, and we're going around the room, and we're saying keep, delete, or modify.
Correct.
We can keep the goal, but again, going back to my earlier comment about goal two, I still think it's a narrow focus.
I couldn't hear that.
We can keep the goal, but I still think it's a narrow focus, as I mentioned. The comments that I.
You still think what? I, I can't hear that last part, you trade off.
We can keep goal three, I'm trying to keep it, but I'm still concerned with the narrow focus that we have. Of this goal, and I use goal two as an example of my concerns and comments, but I'm not going to prolong it. You can keep it, it's a good goal, it's based upon our needs assessment, we need to focus on this. So, keep it.
Okay, um, Mr. Jordan?
Keep.
Ms. Smith?
Modify.
What's your modification?
Twenty-five, school year twenty-five, twenty-six, I'd like to see at least forty-five percent.
Okay, um. Ms. Smith has offered a modification of changing the target to forty-five percent. Is there any, can I see a thumbs up for anybody in support of that?
Can I push it to fifty?
Well, that's. Actually, that's what I had written down, but.
Yeah, that was my first choice, but I was like, okay, let me come back a little bit.
We should get a little bit. If they go with him.
Man, I'm looking at this, and it's two percent increase, and then that last year jumps three percent.
Because you're getting better and better. Under Northern Public Schools instruction.
Okay, so the, the modification was to forty-five percent, and again, I, I didn't. I wasn't able to see who had thumbs up in the amount of time that you had them up. So Ms. Smith, Ms. Campson, Mr. Jordan, and Ms. Bessine. Okay, so, um. That modification, uh, appears to have support, yeah.
Hi Cindy, I just, I just want to make sure that everybody understands for, especially for those who might be watching, or, you know, making comments during this session. There is no, there, there's, I have full confidence that every student can achieve high potential. And just because we set this bar at forty percent, I am basing this off of what the superintendent. Is looking at with regards to, as she said before, trend data, I hope that our past performance is actually. We look at it, but we've learned from some things that we can modify and, and truly accelerate with the items that she's going to put in place. Um, but just because I am not in support of forty-five does not mean. That I don't believe that I don't want fifty, sixty, one hundred percent, so I just want to continue to reiterate, I'm. I hear what she is saying about the realistic part of the smart goals, and if by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we are hitting it, and we are making lots of progress. Again, as Mr. Clinton said, this is a living document, and so I'm totally comfortable with pushing that benchmark up, but for right now, knowing. The current situation that we are in, I think forty percent, if we can get to that forty percent, that would be a good achievement, and then we're going to keep moving ahead. I just don't want that to be lost in these votes that we're taking. I believe in our students, but I also believe in the realisticness of it. Thank you.
Okay, so support for forty-five, um, so. The goal is modified to a forty-five percent target, and Ms. Bessine is. Uh, based on that, any keep, delete, modify, any further modification?
Uh, based on that modification, I say keep.
Okay, um, so goal three is complete with the modification of language. That was agreed upon, and to forty-five percent. Target. Um, so goal four. Uh, again, with the, the language will already be changed, um, to that, uh. As we have the previous ones, are there any questions regarding the annual measures, the interim measures? Superintendent? Okay, um, then we'll keep, delete, modify, Dr. Martin?
For number four?
Yep, both four, were there questions?
Yeah.
I, I didn't hear any.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to read and be on two screens at the same time, so.
Gotcha.
So I do have a question about the interim measure, um. We just have one, is there, is there no other interim measures that you all consider? Um, that would um, tie to the, the goal that, that we've established?
Two.
I'm not, I'm not counting the ones that have blanks on it, I'm saying that we have.
Yeah, there's still going to be a measure once we get the data in this fall.
This is.
We get the data.
It's my opportunity to.
This fall.
It's just my opportunity to explain my comments, so I was saying that, for me, I don't know how to count the measure that's blank, so I'm just dealing with the measure that I can see right now. And so my question was, and is, um, did you all consider any other interim measure? That um, may have um, impact on the. Goal that we've established that would be good for monitoring purposes, or you really only could say that. This one, and then the eventual, the growth one are the only ones that you've, that you considered?
To be quite honest, we've been through so many iter- iterations of this document, so I, I would say we landed on these two for a good reason. If, if we took one off, it was because um, we were provided the feedback that um, we needed to be able to secure more data throughout the year, and it wouldn't be like. Collecting some of this data at the end, I just don't remember, I think we did have more at one point, but I think we, it was deleted. Honestly, I just don't remember, again, we've spent so much time on this, it is, I, I can't remember, Dr. Poole, do you remember if we had a third one?
So this one, um, the. We, we didn't have a solid third one because we don't have multiple data points throughout the year, however, we are putting in place. Um, programs and software that will have different measures, we just don't know how they'll measure yet, so we don't feel comfortable putting on here as an interim measure. Um, you know, as, as, since we, we haven't even experienced, it's our first year of implementing them, so. There's no way we could put a measurement on here for it, so we felt comfortable with these two measures that we have on here, that they would be. Um, ample amount of data to show that we're, we're working during the year to meet each of the annual measures for the goal.
So, so I might just ask a follow-up question to that, so. There, there are various benchmark assessments and other assessments that the school division is doing internally. That tracks progress, while I know this focuses on SOL. Um, as we've talked about things in the past, and I think even, um. Think I was in a meeting with the state super- superintendent, and he said something about. Our quarterly benchmark assessment data was being reported to the state, so is there nothing in our, I may have heard that. He, you know, may not have heard that correctly, but my question is, since we do know that we have. Benchmark assessments and other internal assessments that are taking place. Um, is there not one that would be, that could be considered here as part of the interim? Interim measure, I mean, not just focusing on the fact that it says SOL, because we know that's. Is what it is, but in there's some support or impact for. Um, what you all are monitoring or measuring. Um. Generally, for lack of a better word, that, that could be an interim interim measure.
We did not feel so at this time.
Did I respond at something to Mr. Jordan?
And, and as it relates to the, the, the benchmark.
This discussion right now, right now, I just wanted to, am I, am I allowed to respond something to Mr. Jordan?
I think Dr. Birdsong was still answering the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't know she was.
Yeah.
So I, I wanted to go back to our DBA data again, and I think, you know, for years and years. I, I can just recall being under various superintendents and always having concerns about reporting that data out to the board, because it's used for instructional purposes. So I would, I would strongly, I would not recommend that we use that data um, to monitor what, for, for this work right here, that's an internal. Um, I think that data should be used internally to provide feedback to our classroom teachers, our building principals, so that we can. And our Department of Curriculum Instruction, so that we can improve our instructional best practices, which will result in. In better student outcomes, so no, I would say definitely not utilizing our DBAs for this particular goal.
Lauren has her hand up.
Okay, Ms. Campson?
I just wanted to say a quick thing back to Mr. Jordan. Dr. Birdsong says exactly what I would say, because the, the, the quarterlies are helpful, but they're not tested themselves. And when, when I used to try and align them with SOL results, there, it was quite a divide, because they're, they're looking for something a little differently. Um, so it, what I would recommend, and you may have already done this, Mr. Jordan. Look at a report that comes out, you know, we get the, what we get here on the board is, we get what the data is, but maybe it would be helpful to see where that data comes from. Because what STAR does is it gives you such a detailed report on every little single skill that's being looked at. That it, uh, across the board for that grade level, that it really gives you much more information than you could even imagine, it's really a, a great device, so just throwing that out there.
And, and just, just for clarity, I'm not, I wasn't saying that it shouldn't be DBAs or something else, I was just asking a question, because in the. Some of the other goals, we had more than one, and I was just asking whether or not there was something else that could be considered, and my response that I've received is no, so.
Well, that's because reading has so many more tests than everything else does.
Are there any other questions regarding the um, interim measures or targets? Okay, not seeing any, um, so let's uh, talk about keeping, deleting, or modifying, um, Dr. Martin?
Keep.
Uh, Mr. Clinton? You, Ms. Campson?
Modify.
What's your modification?
Make it math and reading.
Is there? Is there support for math and reading in one goal? Thumbs up. Okay, I only see two, two in support of that, okay, um, so that modification. Dr. Martin, you got a question?
I remember at our retreat, we were told that we couldn't combine them, that it would convolute the purpose of the pro- this process, so this keeps coming up, and, and we really did. Come to an agreement in July that we weren't going to do that.
I did not think that was AJ who provided that feedback, yeah.
He, he, I don't see any other documentation on that, and I did not agree to it at the time, so. Obviously, I'm a little minority by myself, but that's what I feel like, that every student deserves to have your eye on them, and I'll.
I agree with you on that, but, but for the purpose of this.
Yeah, but there's no place in here for that to happen, plus I still haven't seen an accreditation goal. So I have those two big concerns about the document, and I guess I'll continue having them, and I'll continue bringing them up, because I can't support it without accreditation. And without every student having an opportunity to be looked at.
Okay, um, Dr. Gabriel, keep, delete, or modify?
Delete. Um, with the same reason that Ms. Campson uh, reiterated.
Yeah, that would have been better for me to say delete.
There any support for deleting the goal, thumbs up? Okay, I only see two thumbs, um, Mr. Jordan, keep, delete, modify?
Uh, modify.
And your modification?
Uh, modify the seventy percent to eighty percent. Prior to the pandemic, uh, black students were at uh, sixty-three percent. Uh, in the pandemic, we see the drop to seventeen percent, and to say that we will take. To the twenty-four, twenty-five school years, just to get back to where we were, seems to me uh. Excessively long, so I, I think we should have uh, eighty percent. Uh, at least as our um, target by June of uh, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, the modification offered is a target of eighty percent. It's um, thumbs up for support of that. I, I only see three. Okay.
Were you including me or three without me?
Three with you.
Oh, okay.
I, I assumed your thumb that you were in support, yeah, Dr. Martin?
Um, I know we keep going back to the increasing on percentages, and I just want to share my thoughts around it, I would rather. Meet these goals early and adjust than to not meet them and fail.
You don't fail when you do this, it's an.
Well, I'm saying that it, it would be us not meeting our goals.
Yeah, but a goal is something that you, that you reach for, it's a men shot.
I, I think we're still reaching here, I, I mean, I think we're reaching for goals that are established within reason.
Okay, so that, the eighty percent modification did not pass, um, and moving on, Ms. Smith?
Modify.
Modify, what is your modification?
Twenty-five, twenty-six to seventy-five percent.
Um, is there support for modifying to seventy-five percent, thumbs up? Two, three, four, I do see four in support of seventy-five. Seventy-five percent has been supported as the target, um, Ms. Bessine, any uh, keep, delete, modify from there? If you're speaking, I'm not hearing you.
I think your mic is.
No. Oh.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um. I don't know what I was, I was going to suggest eighty percent as well, but um, I will keep with the seventy-five percent.
Okay, so goal four has been modified with um, the language that was agreed to before, and then a seventy-five percent target. Um, and finally, goal five. Uh, any questions regarding the interim measures or annual targets, or uh. The annual goal ta- goal targets, the interim measures, or the annual interim measure targets? Uh, Ms. Campson?
Uh, yes, uh, kindergarten is not included, is there no kindergarten? No, they are, why are the only first and second grade? Down for the PALS test here? Instead of, because we're looking, we'd like to catch the kids in kindergarten, it would seem like. So, you know, because that's where we just make a lot of decisions about their support, and for some reason, we do. First, we do, and the first one. No, they're, they're measuring, well, it is growth, but they're looking at the decline in how many kids have to be, have intervention. I would have done it in the more positive instead of the negative, but it has grade one and PALS. I would have done it in the more positive instead of the negative, but it has grade one and PALS, has grade two and PALS, the second one has grade one and PALS, and the third one has grade, what grade is that one? Two, and why not three there also, so we can be monitoring them as we go for third grade because that's when we're doing this test. So I would have gone K-two for PALS, and then I would have gone two, three. And I might even taken two off PALS, but either way, I would go two, three. So that we're getting a lot of information about each one, and I really probably would have just done K-one. I mean, that's just me. But and so we, because you don't want to test the little kids over the top. Uh, I would go one, two, and then for PALS, and then I'd go, I mean, K-one, and then I would go two, three for um STAR, that is, would be my suggestion, but I certainly like to see kindergarten and third grade get into this, however you group them together.
Dr. Birdsong, could you speak to the rationale for the interim measures as they are?
Absolutely. So the reason why first and second grade was selected for PALS was it's it's closer to that third grade level. Um, and we thought it would be a better measure in the PALS assessment. Um, as far as STAR being second grade, um, it was, you know, getting the students into third grade as ready as they could be. And then we knew we had the SOL through test or the growth assessment now called um coming into third grade to know that they're going. But we figured as a early learning measurement, the first and second grade PALS assessment is is what's closer to third grade. The PALS data on kindergarten may not be a good enough indicator for a third grade um on grade level reading, but first and second grade is leading into third grade, so that's why those grade levels were selected.
But if you could identify some of the kindergarteners earlier to start even more intervention, it seems like since you've got it, you would go all the way through, all the way down to begin because that's where a lot happens in that. Well, I don't need to tell you that, but it does. A lot happens in third and in kindergarten. It's not take a nap and play with your toys anymore. It's.
Well, and I think I'd I'd like to be clear that just because it's not a measure here doesn't mean it's not a focus. We have a very large focus on on early literacy this year, and and kindergarten is a heavy included in, you know, focus.
And I'm sure you do. I'm not debating any of that. I was just saying for feedback. I know I'd like to see it as a board member is I'd like to see that progress that goes in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade with PALS. And I'd like to see the progress that goes with second and third grade with with, because I'd like to see how the third graders are doing. They're the ones that are going to be taking the 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 SOL test. I'd like to be seeing how they do first quarter, second quarter, third quarter.
Well, and you know, those are reported to the board separately. So I mean, there's our, we do the STAR and the PALS reports.
But this is the board's goals, and and so I'm just saying I would like to have that information. So that's what I'm requesting that is when I get to modification, that's what I'll be requesting. That and and a change in the uh twenty-six scores.
So so just as a reminder, the interim measures are for the superintendent to select. The goal is for the board to modify and select.
Um, well, that's what I said. I'll be asking for a modification.
For the goal. Okay, um.
Wait a minute. No, not for the goal. You're right. Oh!
Okay, Ms. Bassin.
Bedtime yet? Y'all need to carry me home. I don't know if water's going to do it.
Ms. Bassin, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a, I had a clarifying question. Um, just in the language of the interim measure. So if I'm reading correctly, um, the percentage of grade two students who are identified as needing intervention based upon fall to spring PALS results will decrease from forty-nine percent. So that forty-nine percent is reflective of that spring, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay. In the spring of twenty-two. Okay. I guess I'm wondering, anyway, why it says the fall to spring, but.
Test one is fall.
No, I know when the tests are. I was just wondering if we're really just talking about from from. Okay, anyway, that's just.
That's a good question.
It's just a technical thing. I mean, I know when we test, I just am asking.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the, i- is that? Um. Does it kind of muddy muddy the measure? Just for anyone to to understand it is what I mean. Um, versus just saying from spring of twenty twenty-one to to uh twenty-five percent in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Like, anyway.
That's what we call the test, though. We call it by the season. That's what that is. That's why that's.
No, I don't mind putting the season there, but it says fall to spring PALS results.
Right.
But we're not putting the fall baseline in that, in the measure, I mean, in the interim measure itself. Does that make sense?
It does. And the the um, when we looked at this interim measure from fall to spring, we looked at the students who were identified from fall to spring and what that percentage is, and that that would drop each year. I I see the language confusion you see there that we could, you know, honestly, we could take that out of the interim measure and just say from spring to spring, who's identified in the spring as well. Um, but since the test is given the fall, the fall and spring to all students in those grade, in that grade level, that's why we had it in there, but.
Oh, I see.
I I see the confusion that you can see it both ways.
Yeah, yeah, okay, because so as you described it, I see what you're saying, but that's not what comes across to me when you first read it, which might say, okay, maybe we shouldn't put that in there. All right, but thank you for the clarification. That was, that was it.
Okay, Dr. Gabriel, I think I saw your hands.
Yes, thank you. Um, Dr. Birdsong, question for the PALS test. Is there a PALS test that is designed for kindergarten and one for first grade and then one for second grade? Or is it still the same test?
They are, they are.
Is it a different test?
Different test. I was muted. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so now for the keep, delete, modify, um, we'll start Ms. Bassin?
Oh, sorry, I was making, okay, um. I would like to see eighty percent for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Ms. Bassin has offered a modification of the target to eighty percent. Um, thumbs up for support of that. I am only seeing two thumbs up. Three, no. Got Smith, Bassin, Jordan. Did I miss anybody on a thumbs up? Okay, so no modification of eighty percent. All right, um, Ms. Smith?
Since there's no modification, keep.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Uh, likewise.
Mr. Clinton?
Keep.
Uh, Dr. Gabriel?
Keep.
Ms. Campson?
Keep.
And Dr. Martin?
Keep.
Okay, so you have gone, you have your five goals. And now we will move on to the um, to do the same exercise with the guardrails. So if you look at guardrail one, um, what questions do you have?
Is Lauren's hand up?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I was looking down at my paper. Ms. Campson?
Oh, before we move to the guardrails, I want to say that because there is nothing in any of our goals about uh accreditation for our schools, I will not be able to vote for this final document. I I can't do it without having us have some kind of focus on getting our schools accredited. I will stand forever on that. And second of all, I'm concerned with the block out of many of our students. Oh.
She can be there.
Yeah, I I'm I'm very concerned that we have nothing on accreditation here. I'm going to have civic leagues to be speaking to. I've already started sending out my contacts to them for this year. And when they see this, this is what I'm going to hear. And I would be, and if I were one of them, this is what I would be saying. What about accreditation? I think Norfolk School Board is missing something here that's going to cause us problems with a lot of our our parents because we're not working to, they don't see that we are. Of course, we're working for it, but it isn't a focus if you don't have it on the goal, on your strategic plan, and there's nothing here about accreditation. I'm very, very concerned about that. And thank you for letting me get that in.
Yeah, thanks for um nudging me, whoever did that. Um, Dr. Birdsong, could you speak to um to accreditation? And and what um administration will will be looking at regarding that?
With. I know that, I'm sorry, Cindy.
No, that's okay.
Cut you off.
Nope, that's good. Go for it.
I do know that our community stakeholders in terms of, you know, our common language and what they're going to be looking for. At the end of the day, you know, as a parent myself, parents, when they, when they move to the area, um, the Tidewater area certainly, or within Norfolk specifically, they're going to be um researching, you know, uh, which schools are fully accredited and and which are not. So that is, you know, parents, our parents certainly understand that language. But at the end of the day, with many of these uh goals that have just, um, that you have just discussed, even if we don't meet the goals that are outlined here, we'll still have schools that get accredited. Because again, um, if we're looking at the the Virginia Department of Ed's accreditation model, they not only look at proficiency, they look at growth as well. And this board has decided not to look at growth for their goals, but only at proficiency. So there will be schools that will will be fully accredited even if we don't meet these outlined goals that the board has, you know, is is talking about establishing moving forward. And certainly for me.
Of the goals um have uh lead to accreditation? Will, if you accomplish the goals?
Yes, uh, again.
Will that move you into accreditation?
We can still have some schools that get fully accredited, and we still may not meet these goals that we just talked about. So working towards these goals because you're only focused on accreditation, I'm sorry, on proficiency and not on what the state is looking at for accrediting schools, will still have some schools that will achieve full accreditation status, even though the, some of these goals may not be, um, we won't meet some of these goals. I'm not saying we're not going to meet the goals. All I'm saying is we could still have some schools that achieve full accreditation status, and we still not meet the goals outlined within these goals and guardrails that we're talking about right now.
Okay, but if, if you accomplish these goals, will that move schools into accreditation?
A- absolutely. If you're talking about proficiency of students, yes. Yes.
Okay, moving, moving on to guardrails, if we're ready to do that. Um, looking at guardrail one, are there any questions regarding the interim measures or um interim measure targets that you see there? Mr. Jordan?
Um. I get, I guess, as as we were discussing the the guardrail and trying to make sure that we had um community engagement and feedback, um. Um, let me, maybe let me start with the second one. So um, on on the zip code piece, um. I'm not sure that the, I'm not sure zip code is the um, if we're going to use a geographical standard, I don't, I don't know if the zip code is the appropriate um identifier. Um, our zip codes in Norfolk kind of vary. Um. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure. Maybe you all can explain a little bit more about the use of zip codes. And then in the um first one around advisory groups, um, while it speaks to having advisory groups, it doesn't really seem to me speak to um the guardrail around um demographically representative and culturally affirming and responsive. And I I would like to encourage, if that's the appropriate way of of saying this, um, something that speaks to uh the culturally affirming piece and something that speaks stronger to uh inclusion than um uh zip codes and advisory groups. Because you could create all kinds of advisory groups and not be um representative and culturally affirming. Likewise, um, just adding a zip code to uh data collection tools doesn't necessarily, in my mind, um, speak to the power and depth that I think the guardrail was intended to uh to reach. And frankly, to that matter, I don't think I quite understand the the last one. Um, so we were going to request for zip codes. Um, it'll be optional. And something is growing from zero, zero to fifty percent to a hundred percent. So I'm not sure I fully understand that, that that second one at all.
Dr. Birdsong, do you have answers or comments for?
Not at this time.
Any?
Is it possible?
You know, this was a a challenging guardrail for us. Um, it was extremely challenging. I think we even, you know, provided some feedback to you about this guardrail and and how we felt that it was challenging. So in in order, in an effort to be more inclusive, we thought that we could formulate, develop, create these advisory groups that represented diverse families, um, including our students and giving them a voice in uh decisions being made um as well as different teacher groups. And so um we definitely understand and appreciate and acknowledge that this is an area that we definitely need to improve upon. And so for us in getting that feedback, one of the best strategies we thought that we would be able to use was, you know, to to formulate or create these advisory groups with diverse uh groups of people, again, families and children and representation from our teachers and administrators and and things of that nature. And so I don't know else, how else we would get feedback unless we include these various stakeholders in these advisory groups. And in terms of zip code, we were looking at geographical data, looking at data in terms of, you know, where where people are residing, and as we're looking at the data and collecting it and um noticing that for whatever reason, we don't have a great response in certain parts of our community, then we need to figure out what we need to do to be be more effective in in reaching, um, you know, our residents who are not being, or our families that are not responsive to whatever requests that we have for additional information.
In the.
So we felt like it was at least a start.
So on on that second one, then, so where it says zero to fifty percent, So on, on that second one then, so where it says zero to fifty percent, the fifty percent is, is, is what? That fifty percent of the individuals that respond to the surveys will choose the zip code option? Or fifty percent where the, the percentage of responses that we get per zip code is, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite following what the fifty percent is, is speaking to.
Dr. Paul, please.
The fifty percent is that, you know, as we move up, the fifty percent is that saying this school year that, that will make sure, you know, that that's on fifty percent of the surveys, the zip code, and seventy-five percent of the surveys will have it, eighty-five, ninety-five to a hundred percent, and twenty-five, twenty-six. We'll probably exceed this goal, but the, you know, the, the measure is that we're gonna be cognitive to make sure that we're asking on our surveys that go out the zip code. And, and putting procedures in place because, you know, different, different groups do surveys within the division. Media will assist with this to make sure that the zip codes are on there, and that's the growth pattern. Um, to me, to make sure that by the twenty-five, twenty-six, all of our surveys go out, have this geographical identifier.
Right, but it's, it's optional, right? And so let's, let's take the two, three, five, zero, eight zip code. The two, three, five, zero, eight zip code can go from, uh, Virginia Place, parts of Villahite's, all the way over to parts of Larchmont. So just in, in that section alone, you could go from a school that we have that is, uh, ninety-eight percent, uh, free and reduced lunch to a school that's thirty percent free and reduced lunch. So you see, you get something from a two, three, five, zero, eight zip code. It doesn't necessarily, I'm not sure what it, what it actually speaks to. Likewise, two, three, five, oh, four, and others that goes as well. And so, just in the context of the discussion that we're having, that's just my feedback, that I, I don't see where the zip code approach and having the responses optional versus required leads us in the, uh, in the framing of the, of the guardrail. But I'll, I'll yield to, so others have an opportunity to speak.
Ms. Bessine, you had your hand up, and then Dr. Martin, after that.
Didn't we? Yes, um, I, I had, I completely share, uh, Mr., Mr. Jordan's, um, questions that, that he had. I too, I too had, um, questions around these two particular, um, guardrails, I mean interim guardrails, and also wanted greater clarification on how we would, um, monitor whether we were truly, um, engaging in culturally affirming and responsive communication and engagement. And since we were pretty intentional about having that piece in there, um, I didn't see how the interim measures really got to that. And I understand it, it could be challenging. Um, but was, was hoping to see some, some more out of that. Um, having reviewed some of the climate survey data too, you know, it really got me thinking about, and I guess we'll get to this, so I'm not gonna enter, jump into potential modifications just yet. Um, but, you know, that got me thinking a little bit, and I'll wait, I'll hold the rest of, uh, my suggestions around that. But I, I just wanted to say, say that I share, um, Mr. Jordan's concerns, um, with, with the interim measures and whether it truly gets at, uh, the guardrail as it was intended, so.
Um, Dr. Birdsong, um, regarding, I, I believe one of, um, Ms. Bessine's questions was regarding addressing the culturally affirming and responsive communication and engagement. Um, is there a measure, uh, that, that would, uh, give evidence of?
I'd have to think about that a little more. I can't on the spot answer that, no.
Good lord.
Uh, Dr. Martin? Uh, you're on you.
Okay, so I'm, how I'm reading this is that we're, this is a measure to include, um, a diverse, a more diverse population, or, um, segment of our population in decision-making, or to, yes, in our decision-making. Um, and we, knowing that we have had a difficult time in the efforts that we've previously made to, to do this. Um, you know, and also noting that communication goes both ways to be effective, um, and to be engaging. What I see the zip code representing is an increase in trust from our community that they would actually put down their zip code. Because we have had several instances where, you know, people just are not gonna give us any, any information or respond to surveys and so forth. So I think that, I'm reading this as by receiving, by someone input, the increase in input of information, and they're using zip code as a, an indicator, does two things. It shows that they're more willing to give their personal information to a certain degree without, you know, being too personal, but I think this is a start. But it also shows us what, generally what areas of the city we are getting responses from and those that we are not.
Okay, uh, just quickly, something I think that you mentioned, Dr. Martin, was, um, talked about an input. Um, I guess, I, I think I, and this might be some of the, some of where some of the questions that I've already heard are, are where the struggle might be, um, is, and I know several of you have had discussions, um, in your one-to-one conversations with your cohort numbers. Um, interim measure number two, is it an input, output, or outcome? And anybody can answer that.
I would see this as an output.
An input.
I see it as input.
Yeah, so I think that's where, I think that's, might be where the, where some of the questioning is coming from, um, and, and interim measures, uh, would be recommended as outputs or outcomes. Is, is everyone seeing what?
Yes.
That is. Yeah.
Okay. I would see that, I was seeing, think, seeing this as a, as the, um, by building this process that you would acquire more information from your, from these stakeholders.
And, and that might be a strategy to reach a certain output. So the output would need, I thi, I think that's where some of the struggle, like I said, some of the struggle is coming. So, um, coming from where, from what I'm hearing.
I say something to, oh yeah, I was, you know, I was looking at this too. I have my own question, but to, to address the question on the floor. First of all, what a challenge to try and come up with it. I have to be honest. I mean, I'm sure, the challenge here, so I was trying to figure out, maybe there's a way, when we were saying, uh, this is just a suggestion, when we look at the first one, the advisory groups, maybe that's, there's a way that we could kind of do our own division or something. This is just getting harder, to make sure that we're getting some clusters of like people. So we'd, excuse me, so that we can be, I'm so sorry, my ass was really bad. Um, that there was be a way to kind of group some of the advisories committees so that you would know that they are different enough that you would be getting all kinds of different people's opinions and input. Um, um, that sounds like a massive job to do, but I don't, to end, for what the board's asking here. That seems like something maybe you could do. Cause I agree with Mr. Jordan about the zip codes. Thank you. Um, I agree with Mr. Jordan about the zip codes. They are all over the place. But, um, I'm not sure how else to get it unless you do something like, that's very deliberate with different parts or maybe related to high schools. Well, that still wouldn't give it to you. I don't know how you're gonna get it. Having said that, I don't know how you can get it.
I think, I think the suggestion that I'm going to make at this point, um, because there, if, if I'm, uh, correct, there's eleven minutes left in our time together. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Um, I, since we're in guardrail one, my recommendation is going to be that, um, that there is, uh, that give staff more time to work on interim measures that are, that are outputs for this, um, and bring that back to the board, uh, for consideration. Um, and, and I completely agree with all of the sentiment here. This is, this is an incredibly, um, challenging, uh, thing for administration and, um, and for, um, but I, and the advice that I would give, the coaching that I would give is that it would, if there is not a current measure that exists, it would be something that, um, the administration would need to, need to come up with then. Um, so more time to workshop on that, I think is needed. Dr. Martin?
Should we put it to a vote to, um, keep, delete, or modify?
No, I think that, I think you need to have more information to understand if the, if the guardrail, um, if the interim measures are capturing the intent that the board, uh, that the board had when they wrote this guardrail. And without that, you will not know that.
But what if we're considering deleting the guard, the guardrail? Aren't we only responsible for the guardrail?
Is there support for deleting the guardrail completely?
I would like, I wouldn't mind deleting it.
I would support that. I would support it. I think it's too hard to measure, and we should have things that we can measure here.
Uh, anything's measurable. It's just, it's just whether or not a tool currently exists. So, um, I only heard two in support of deleting. So I think, I think we'll move on to guardrail two and leave this one. Um, put a pin in that one for more, give more administration more time to work on that. So looking at guardrail two, um, any questions regarding the interim measures? Campson?
Uh, yes, I, um, I love this one, by the way. Amazing, huh? But, uh, what I'd like to see added, I, I know I spoke to my concern about the gifted students and being able to get at the elementary level gifted students into the Young Scholars Program, um, and, and, and other items like this. And I would like to know if, is it possible to add gifted to this? I know that seems odd because we're pushing, and oh, I guess we couldn't cause it's African-American children. Well, that's what I was looking at though, was to increase.
Are you on guardrail two?
Guardrail two, where it's, yes, the, increase the percentage of black, oh, it has to be high school students. Well, then take high school out.
Oh, interim measures.
Or, or somehow, I would like to, I, I would still like to include, because at the elementary, gifted students have programs at the elementary school, and, and they need, and, and we're having, and I remember I spoke to the board about this, is the fact that we are not getting our African-American students who are leaving, uh, elementary and moving into secondary into programs like Young Scholars. We're not being able to do it. Those are heavily white. So that would be my only suggestion. I like everything else about it. Is, is there a way to put that in here? And I'd ask Dr. Birdsong, it could be that it can't be worked in, but we need.
Totally different.
Yeah, well, I don't know. Maybe you could put an "and" because this is all secondary, for secondary and then for elementary or something. I mean, I really hate seeing our, our, our African-American gifted students who are brilliant, and I, and we can't get them in to this one small program. It needs to be, it needs to be more openings there, but still, just something to think about. I'd like to see something done for, if we're looking at this, for our African-American elementary moving into secondary children. Is there a way to include it? You know, maybe there isn't, but that would be a suggestion that I would make.
Dr. Birdsong, can you speak to that in your rationale?
Um, so, so I understand what Mr., what Mr., I'm sorry, to Ms. Campson.
The night is just sliding through.
Ms. Campson, I understand the sentiment of, of what you're saying. And, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. But I don't know if you recall that when, um, we had that wonderful presentation about our efforts this year to increase, um, enrollment of, of our, um, African-American children in various gifted programs, and our approach at, um, expanding, um, opportunities at an earlier age. I, I think that will focus on what you're trying to, um, a, a, achieve. And I think that will support exactly what you're talking about.
Without needing to have the guardrail.
Because it's in place. The, we, we plan to, we are implementing that.
Cause I'll be looking at it.
Yes, you, we shared that, but I think it was last year, was in the spring, we shared the, yes, with the audit and our strategies and moving forward to address our data.
So I'd be very interested, then I'll be asking in the spring.
Absolutely.
What the percentage increase is. Thank you, for increasing the number of slots too. Okay, then I'll take that off. I'll take it off.
Almost.
So then I'm okay with this one.
All right, we taking a vote?
Um, Ms. Bessine, you had questions?
Yes, um, so in thinking about this one, um, you know, kind of, you gotta take a step back and think, okay, well, what are the practices that we know through research that perpetuate systemic racism? So when I think about it that way, I think, you know, through discipline, through under-representation of black students in gifted and advanced coursework and programs, um, I think of school climate, I think of, um, you know, preparation for college and career. There are so many, so many different areas that I think, I think of, um, where I think similar to the first guardrail, I just want to be sure with guardrail two, which I a thousand percent support, that we're clear about, you know, what that means and if we need to be more specific. Um, cause I did see opportunities like in the climate survey, for instance, where measures from there could be also incorporated here about, you know, sense of belonging, having adults that care about them, which we know that our schools with, that are racially isolated tend to have lower scores. I mean, things like that, that, that I think can be included in this piece. And to Ms. Campson's point, I agree. You know, maybe there's an under-representation, you know, that we can look at, which is, you know, part of our equity policy as well. Like really, you know, I think doing a deeper dive and looking at, you know, our policies and what tools we do have available to us to really look at this. This one to me is, is, um, you know, kind of like a deal breaker. Um, and, uh, I think with, with this guardrail, we will achieve, you know, the goals, goals two, three, uh, you know, and four, you know, all of, all of these goals. So, um, I guess I'm just putting, putting that out there. Um, those comments out there for, for feedback and input. But, um.
Was there a specific question for the superintendent, or was that feedback input for the board?
It was just feedback that I don't want to with, um, whatever minutes, if we're, if we're hard stopping at nine o'clock. I, I, I guess I'm, 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 uh, weary of rushing through this guardrail, um, with that time crunch. So I'm, I'm trying to express the importance of this to me, that I, I, I want us to have time to actually talk and deliberate over this.
Could I say something to, I agree, and I think that we don't need to rush through it, but I do think we should have a hard nine o'clock time. I, um, and I'm sure Cindy agrees, because this is the way you're trained when you're trained to go in and be a trainer, is not to keep people way past the timelines.
We don't have to go way past the timeline. We only have two more.
I think we should stop at nine. That's what we were told to be here, and I, and I think it's gonna get rushed.
I didn't say nine. It's okay.
Oh, okay. Well, I just heard side conversation. I heard side conversation over here about it almost being over and whatever, that I was, um, I, I, I just want to be clear that if, that we're not rushing. but I was, I just want to be clear that if, that we're not rushing through it. That's all.
Well, we are.
I don't want to.
Well, neither do I, but. AJ's already left.
AJ's here.
He's still here.
He is? Okay.
Cindy?
So I guess I will, we can continue this conversation if the board, if that is the will of the board. But otherwise, we can put a pin in it and reconvene to have further discussion on this and the remaining guardrails, as well as the first guardrail with further workshop interim measures.
So here's where this puts me though. I have to then, if we don't get this done tonight, then I have to then come up with another time for us to meet, and then we're going to be off of our timeline again, instead of just taking another 45 minutes to get it done.
I support that. I am, I am willing and ready. I just want to be sure that everybody is on the same page.
I prefer the pin. I prefer the pin too.
What's our next, we're scheduled, what is it, October 6?
Yes, we're, and we are booked on that one. We can't put anything else on that calendar. Yeah.
Goals and guardrails will come before anything else.
Just cannot move forward without this done.
I think that that's important to.
What are you saying, Cindy, that we would have to do goals and guardrails? On the 6, we can't even do the other stuff until we finish the goals and guardrails.
I think that's your first priority.
We still have to do ourselves an evaluation.
So stay, staying or leaving? I guess that's what we're deciding here, so.
I'm trying to find dinner because Karen didn't order me no food, so.
I love you guys, and I love the conversation, but I'm leaving. Bye.
That's a problem, since we all need to be here for the, to finish this.
I think when you, you know, and I'm not trying to say anything mean or anything. I'm just saying that hour after hour after hour, it just, it's too much. It's too much. We were given, and we were given a time, 6 to 9 is what I was told, was the time we were going to do this.
It's not on the agenda. So then tell me, when are we going to come back and do this so that we can stay on our timeline?
Do it at the beginning of the October meeting. That's six hours.
We can't, no, that meeting is full. It's already full because we're already behind again. I've spent several hours trying to get you guys together. And so, yeah, I'm a little ticked off right now. We need to get this done. So I'd like some input from all of you on how we're going to stay on our timeline. Yes.
Dr. Martin, okay.
Yes.
Well, there were other options, so.
Yeah, let's, we got two more items that we need to get finished.
It's nine o'clock. It's after nine o'clock.
It is after nine.
Dr. Gabriel has already shut her computer.
So can we do this via Zoom?
We legally are not allowed to do that.
Why not?
Because we're not under an emergency order anymore.
This is, but that's training. That's training, we go to other places to try and, we do PD and stuff.
In person.
Isn't Friday, isn't Friday at the, that, whatever that October thing, isn't that at the library?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
When we meet in October, no, I said, I didn't mean Friday. I mean October 6th, whatever day of the week that is.
We'll be meeting in person.
Yeah, right.
Dr. Martin, before Dr. Gabriel.
I'm not going to talk anymore.
She's leaving.
So I think, I think where we're at right now is that you all are going to need to figure out another, another time to meet. And I'm not sure that you're going to get to any end with that right now. So I would suggest adjourning and, and getting, getting this organized offline with everyone's support of this chair in getting that done.
So why can't we have training online?
As a governing body, the emergency order is over, so we need to meet in person. That's what I brought up to Mr. Cloud earlier because Lauren was asking if we could meet online. She wanted to push our governance training to online, and we can't.
So we can't have virtual training?
No, we have to be in person. Well, that's, our students and our teachers are in person, and so are we. And we talked a lot this year about modeling behavior that we expect in the classroom.
Oh, I don't need a lecture. I just asked a question. So it was pretty much a yes or no.
This 90 minutes is probably about what you're going to need, just throwing that in there.
So, Dr. Martin, since we don't have 100% of the board members here, can you and I and Dr. Birdsong, just maybe tomorrow, reconvene? It's kind of, it's been a long day, and we can come in and work some stuff out and bring some options back. I think we can still work it out, okay? I know it's not the ideal thing, but we'll make it work.
No, it's just that we did make a commitment at the beginning of this process. We agreed that we would be meeting on our meeting days, and we should be farther in this process by now. And it takes, it just keeps getting, we just keep getting, I just, I really want everyone to dig deep and understand the importance of what we're doing here for our children, for our superintendent, to everyone in this district.
Yeah, we offer alternate dates for other parts of this meeting, and they were rejected, and we.
They were not rejected. They weren't, it takes all eight of us to be here, so they weren't rejected.
Thank you all for your time tonight and for the great discussion. I am going to sign off, and you all can be in contact with me when, when you have things sorted out. So thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, AJ. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Have a good evening.
All right. Meeting adjourned.